Meeting tonight with a roll call from our town clerk.
Mayor March Burns.
I am present.
We approach him, Behringer, here. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Dellenger.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Van.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Gibson. So, council members, I would draw your attention to the agenda for this evening. And I don't believe there are any presentations that I'm aware of this evening. Are there any, Ms. Gibson? Okay.
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I jumped ahead just for a moment there. So let's go to the adoption of the agenda. And I want to ask the council to consider the change. Mr. Dellenger has a scheduling conflict this evening, which is going to require him to leave probably about 30 minutes from now. And so he has requested that we change the order of the first two items on the agenda and make item number two, number one, and vice versa. So I've told him that he's already had some familiarity with the other item there. So in lieu of his needing to leave, council, I would ask you to approve the agenda with that change noted.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you for a second. Okay. Any questions about the change or any other items related to the agenda that anybody needs to comment on a question? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. And it is so ordered. So thank you all. I appreciate that. And Mr. Dellenger will let us know when he has to leave, okay? All right, so the first item then will be NCDOT Planning Grant Initiative. And I believe this is going to be led by Ms. Gabby Lontos Lawler, our senior planner. So Ms. Gabby, if you are ready, we are ready to hear from you, ma'am.
And Mr. Mayor, this is Jeff Trezenberg, planning director. Gabby has quite a number of items on the agenda for tonight. So wanted to give her a little bit of a breather here and there. So I offered to actually present this item and co-present with her on another one.
Very well.
If that's all right.
Sure, absolutely. Go right ahead.
Share our screen. There we go. So we did bring this to you briefly in April, and we did just want to follow back up, answer a couple of questions and provide maybe just a little bit more background from planning that unfortunately Gabby was not here for, and she's still picking up a lot of the history to certain things as we still go through and catching her up with different transportation items. But we did just want to touch base real briefly and just note that when we did the 2018 Transportation Plan Update, originally it wasn't always envisioned that the transportation plan was going to be part of the comprehensive plan project. But we did, as we moved things along and got additional input from the council and others, that it probably wouldn't hurt for us to go ahead and at least get an update to the 2010 Garner Transportation Plan. And so we did that. And while the project did eliminate from its project list as far as sidewalk projects go, it did eliminate ones that had been completed, and it did accelerate the project costs for those sidewalk projects that were identified back in 2010. We actually never really went through a reprioritization process. So the timeframes that you see in the 2018 plan are still the same timeframes from the 2010, maybe carried forward, advanced by a couple of years, but not reordered. And so Het and I, in talking about this back in the day, had always kind of envisioned that this pedestrian plan could be a next step. There really wasn't any particular sense of urgency to it. However, when we did start talking about potentially another bond referendum, the two certainly seemed to potentially play a possible role together. So that's why we were investigating it. And I'll kind of come back around to that at the end as to how this may work with the current budget cycles. But just again, as a quick overview, it is overseen by the NCDOT Division of Bike and Pedestrian Planning. There's three different types of plans that they do. Garner has never, to my knowledge, participated in one of these grant programs. So the third one you see there, a plan update, would not be applicable. The project acceleration plans are primarily for small jurisdictions, those that are population 5,000 or less. And then the one that we've been looking at has been this comprehensive plan that you see as number one. Some of the benefits that we've identified internally, while we do have a GIS layer from the 2010 plan that showed the sidewalks at that time, it's nothing that has been, to my knowledge, kept up to date since that plan was adopted. And there's very little, if any, data that's actually attached to it. So other than being able to show sidewalks on maps in a graphic format as opposed to having the actual aerial photo, other than showing it, there's really not much else that we can use that for at a staff level. So one of the things that we really saw as a big advantage was this opportunity would allow us to bring that inventory up to date, get all of the attribute data that we would want to have going forward to look at projects in the future and something that we could then keep up to date internally as staff. And so some of those attributes could be the condition of the sidewalk, what type of pavement it is. Is it concrete or is it asphalt? What's the exact width? Is it the standard five feet? Or did in some cases, if they're older, are they only three or four? But it would give us that kind of information as well as information on whether or not ramps are featured at the street crossings. Are they ADA accessible? Are they even, are they an older version of ADA accessible or current standards? Are crosswalks actually present, or is it just a blank crossing? It also would give us a prioritization matrix that we could use when funding is available, whether that be bonds or we receive other grants, or you all set aside monies within a department budget. And we can change those weights and criteria as priorities change. So whether there's something that comes up in the council vision or in new comprehensive plan down the road, we can have criteria, we can add, take them away, we can also change the weights. And that would help us reprioritize much quicker as well as taking into account, you know, local input, including your own. One of the things that y'all had asked for last time was an example of a recent plan. The most recent one in the Triangle area was done by Fuquay in 2013. That's just a snapshot of the cover of their plan. So some of the materials you do get, again, keep in mind, these are just the graphic map presentations of the actual data. But there is an existing conditions map. Again, what would be very critical for us, I think, would be to gather as much data as we can about the actual sidewalks, such as date of installation and condition and the things that I just went over before. The plans are also required to bring in pedestrian crash data so we can see and map those graphically, see where there's hotspots, which, you know, again, Garner's not that big, but we are growing. And then overall pedestrian network recommendations. So again, there's a whole series of other things that go with these maps. But I think what's important here is just to understand that there's a lot of information behind these maps that you don't necessarily see, but are very critical to us being able to help you all with these types of things going forward. Here's a sample of their prioritization criteria. So you can see they, over here in the table on the left, they've identified all of their criteria, they've given them a weighted score. It then gets applied to this project list over here, and it gives you a total score at the end. Again, it's not the be all, end all tool, but it certainly does help you get a jumpstart on prioritizing. So NCDOT does have certain content standards that they expect. Again, even with the existing conditions, there's certain data that they require be collected, and then you can add on to that. I think we're in a good opportunity to be able to do that because we do have at least, we're not starting from scratch. We do have that 2010 data that we can at least start with. So that gives us a little more leverage to be able to add some of this other content that we would like to see. They also have their specifics for what the public engagement process needs to look like at a minimum of two public meetings and four steering committee meetings. And then again, you see that those pedestrian network maps, they do have their own inventory that they do require much more limited, and then the prioritization criteria. So again, just as a reminder, local match and cost estimates that Gabby showed last time were in the 70-30 bracket, looking at about 55 to 70 total. So we get reimbursed for that 70%. DOT does have their on-call list of consultants, which we would issue our own RFQ and select from that group whoever responds. But since they are fronting the majority of the cost, they do have a pre-qualified list from which you solicit responses. Here again is the schedule for this year. If you do decide that you do want to go ahead with this, like I say, there's really no rush on our part other than to say that we saw this as an opportunity to maybe help with the bond prioritization if needed. And so again, we just wanted to answer some of the questions that some of you had from last time. And then particularly, I would just note that based on that previous schedule, we actually would not need to budget these funds until fiscal year '22. We would not get a notice to proceed until February or April of '21. My guess would be the way things are running this year currently. I would expect that to be the latter part of that timeframe. So by the time we issued an RFQ, got it out there, reviewed it, selected it, we'd be well close to July 1st of 2021. So it would not have to be budgeted this fiscal year. We could push all of it actually to fiscal year '22. So with that, I'll wrap up and just see if any of you all have any other questions. And Gabby and I are both here to answer any questions if you have them further.
Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg, for your good presentation. I would just remind council that the background materials, if you still have your agenda for April 21, contains a lot of the initial submission of information that was provided. And Jeff, just one point of clarification, if we're going to proceed with this, did I say a June 30 date as a date that we have to do that or make our intentions known?
Right. We would have to submit the application package by June 30th. It is a fairly simple application project, so it's nothing that we've spent a lot of time on or need to spend a lot of time on, but there is a June 30th application deadline.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Okay, council, I'm going to go one by one and give you an opportunity to comment, ask questions as you will, and I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Could I defer and hear some other opinions before I weigh in?
Okay, all right. I will go to Ms. Behringer.
I'm kind of in a fog as well. I don't mean to say that to pass on the responsibility, but I haven't seen a presentation like this before, so I'm still trying to wrap my head around it, although Jeff's presentation was clear. My leaning is toward pursuing it because we want Garner to go forward in the best way possible. And this sounds like we would get the most professional and most complete and all-encompassing program or schedule going forward to handle all of those sidewalks in the best possible manner. And I didn't mean to use that many words, but my leaning is to pursue the application because it can, I believe it can do a lot for us as far as determining the priorities and the importance and the overall appearance and appeal of our town.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have several questions up with Jeff. One is, what is the advantage for the town considering this application?
I think the biggest bang for the buck, so to speak, is really in the data collection portion. We just currently have a, we're way behind the curve when it comes to being able to leverage the power of GIS to make our jobs, I don't want to just say easier, but make our jobs more efficient so we can better inform you as a council. And that data collection piece is what takes a big chunk of change or a whole bunch of volunteers to get that done. Maintaining it once you have it, we can plan for, and I think we've got the staff and would continue to have the staff to do that. So to me, that's the biggest advantage, to get a truly up-to-date comprehensive inventory of our current sidewalk system. And then being able to take what's being approved in plans that are going through our office right now and being able to add to that and always be able to, at a moment's notice, more or less, be able to generate a new picture for you as to what exactly the conditions are today and what priorities look like. Certainly, as we add more subdivisions, the gaps change. Some of the gaps get smaller and something that might have seemed to be much more of a mountain to climb in order to fund it suddenly isn't. You know, and there's a lot that can be said for what you know as staff, what we observe. But being able to actually show that as we grow is going to get more and more difficult. So again, it's not urgent, but something that I would definitely like to see us move towards somehow.
I have two questions. The next one is relating to Campo. Are our plans or any of our sidewalk plans captured within the Campo plan?
So this plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excuse me for rudely interrupting. Mr. Vance, if you don't mind, I know Mr. Dellenger has to leave, so let me interrupt you and let me give him an opportunity. And I will come right back to you and hold that question if you will in that answer. I apologize. I meant to go ahead and recognize him. So Mr. Dellenger, your turn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vance, for giving me the time. I think the data collection piece is really important to this. My sort of larger concerns are that we have a lot of transportation projects. There are a lot that are on this meeting tonight. And we do not have an up-to-date, really up-to-date transportation plan, period. And this grant, while it, if I remember correctly, and Mr. Trezenberg, you can correct me, I may be incorrect, but I think it is only allowed to touch either pedestrian or bike plan. Is that correct? It's one or the other. So one, it only addresses that pedestrian part. We have bike parts, we have mass transit parts of our transportation system. We have a UDO rewrite going on kind of in parallel with some of these things. So it's not that I don't think we need the inventory. And then the timeline for it being probably delivery sometime summer or fall of 2021. My hesitation is not that we need it, it's just that we have, we don't really have the coordination of all of our transportation needs, I don't feel. And I think we've, so, you know, I'm a little on the fence and ambivalent about this particular project because I don't think it meets the needs and it fills a hole, but they're not in a coordinated way. We have Greenway plan that was done with the Parks and Rec plan, so it would need to be integrated with that. That would happen. So that's sort of my overarching concern is just, we really should be focusing on what we're going to do about doing an updated comprehensive transportation plan. And the piecemeal approach that we're doing now, I think, is sort of catching up to us. There are lots of good plans independently, like with Bus Rapid Transit and the circulation loop and these things. I just, I don't know, I just feel we, so again, I'm not, it's hard to be pro or con on this particular thing. I think in the end, it provides a lot of good data. I just wish it would produce it sooner. What are your thoughts on the status of our more comprehensive, our need for a comprehensive transportation plan?
So I guess it depends on what you, how you want to define what your comprehensive plan should be and what it should cover. I think as our staff has looked at it, we've looked at kind of, we felt that the previous 2010 comprehensive plan was pretty, I wouldn't say robust. A comprehensive plan doesn't always get into the details as much as you may like it to be. So I certainly think we've held the standard that was there with the 2018 plan. I guess our thinking has been that we look then to these finer scale, whether it's a smaller area of a transportation network or a smaller, more focused theme, that that's how we kind of carry those plans forward and develop them further. So again, I don't disagree that, you know, this may or may not be the right thing to pursue at the right time based on where your priorities are for further developing the transportation plan. I think we've looked at it as, hey, this would be an opportunity to further delve into the pedestrian side of things. We've already delved further into greenways through the Parks and Rec plan. That was kind of how we envisioned that to take place when we were doing the transportation update. We knew that was going to be coming next. And then, of course, doing some of the transit planning as well. So I guess it just kind of comes back to me as to where and what you want that comprehensive transportation plan to be, and then how do you want to delve further? So I think this is one way to do it. Is it the best way? I don't know. I feel like it's one way to do it, and I don't think that it's necessarily a bad way. It may not be always the best way, but trying to use the resources and leverage that you have. We at least wanted to be sure to present this to you as an option.
Thank you. And without Mr. Mayor, I would ask your permission to excuse myself from the meeting and my apologies to my colleagues for having to depart.
Okay, thank you, sir. You had informed us of that. So we will so note to Ms. Clerk that Mr. Dellenger is departing the meeting, so we will operate with the four remaining council members. If you have a chance to rejoin us, let us know, okay?
Well, thank you very much. You all have a good night.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, again, apologies to Mr. Vance. I should have made note of the time there. But if you will, go back and resume your questions, if you will, to Mr. Trezenberg.
Yes, yes, Jeff. In reference to the Campo, is it, do you know if it's on the camp, any Campo plans, any of the sidewalk plans that we currently have?
So funding sidewalks through Campo programs is pretty cumbersome for the project that you get. I mean, you can do, and we have done, LAP sponsored projects. When you get up to statewide prioritization level, there you're going to be looking more at greenways that connect Garner to other cities like Raleigh or Clayton. You're not going to be able to do the smaller sidewalk projects. But again, this, any future plan that we do, whether it's this or the transit plan or a corridor plan, we would always want to encourage you to, when you adopt those and approve them, to attach them to the existing transportation plan. So they would become basically an appendancy of the current transportation plan. And that gets fed up to Campo, and they at least have the data, they have the plan, so that if they do get into an exercise where they look at something that's more inter-jurisdictional, that they've got it and they can be sure that they're coordinating their efforts with what we're doing locally.
Okay, and for clarification, the cost share chart that you had up there, it was what, 30% town, 70% NCDOT?
70-30, yeah.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, for your indulgence there. I appreciate that. Mr. Singleton, you waited patiently, sir. It's your turn.
Yes, Jeff, you did show, I went back, I've got the computer, I'm looking at the April 21st meeting. You showed a slide that talked about council involvement and also subcommittee involvement in meeting with the consultants, DOT and the consultants, correct?
Yes.
So we would have council involvement in the process from history and background and so forth? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's, that I think is a benefit, because as you talked about, there are gaps. They get smaller with new subdivisions, but in some old parts of town, we had no sidewalks at all. Cloverdale, Greenbrier, and so forth, we've got, we've got big gaps, so that's what I'm concerned about. So I'll stop. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Matthews, I'll circle back to you since you deferred earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This kind of goes back to the meeting we had on this. And I think Gray and I both, we had some questions in regard with what we have done already. And the question was somewhat asked a while ago, but with what we have done already and our knowledge of the needs we want in our town to bring an outside group in, obviously they're going to want our input, I would think. And once we share that with them, I guess my question is to Jeff is, what can we expect once we share that with them where we know the needs are as we see them? And rather than just come in not knowing, how much is that going to be taken into consideration? Or will they take what we've got and try to take it to another tier above that? And obviously, you'll get data, which is important. So I guess my only question is, you know, what's the upside and what's the downside if we go forward? Jeff, your thoughts?
Sure. So I think what both you and Mr. Singleton were getting to really feeds into that criteria in the prioritization. You know, one of the factors can be neighborhood need. That can be subjective or objective. We could define it on a neighborhood scale as linear feet of sidewalks per house. And it may be that, you know, that captures the fact that Cloverdale has almost no sidewalks in it. That's one way you could do it, and you make sure then that you weight that most heavily. I mean, at the end of the day, whatever gets prioritized in the budget or the bond program or whatever it is, will ultimately be your decision. This is just a tool to kind of help make that hopefully a little bit easier. So I would, the local input, and especially from you as a council, really I see goes into that prioritization matrix and what factors do you consider the most important? And that's where you tweak those weights from year to year as you want to, depending on what's most important to you as a council. And then I think that just kind of helps automate that prioritization process.
Okay. Yeah, I think you got it covered there. So that's a tough question to answer, I understand. Obviously, what they might think is, should be.
obviously, what they might think is should be a priority, what we might think might be two different things altogether due to circumstances we might be aware of, but they could come back and say, we really don't need to do that because you need to be over here doing this. And so uh, I'm just curious where where the two sides would blend in together and what could be the net result out of doing that.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess maybe the better answer to that is that you, we have control over that portion of the plan. They have certain things, they have topics and certain parts that they insist have to be done, but this is totally customizable, as long as we're meeting their basic requirements. The rest of it is completely customizable to the local community and what the local community wants.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's great.
Okay, I'll circle back around, but uh, Jeff, uh, you you, maybe you uh, indicated this before, but under the types of plans, you know, talked about the bike and the pedestrian plan, is that a, is that an either or or both and? If we uh, uh, if we file for this uh, application? I mean, the the biking part, I guess, is what I wanted to uh, uh, learn a little bit more about.
So for jurisdictions our size, we're asked to consider one or the other. And so we've always felt, having gone through the transportation plan the last few years, that pedestrian was the most, was the first priority and bicycles later down the road.
Okay, okay, I do sort of recall that, maybe we can touch on the bicycle stuff at a, at a future date. Um, all right, we've had one round. Uh, anybody else, uh, rather than, I guess, call by name, I'll uh, I'll ask anybody to ju- join in if you have another question or comment for Jeff? Kathy or Elmo, any?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just one uh, one more question in reference to the last meeting we had rep, pertaining to this topic. Uh, the question came up and pertained referencing the choosing or the choice of a, of the construction or firm to do the work. Uh, if NCDOT is going through, going through the selection process, uh, how much input do we have in that process?
So they have pre-qualified a list of firms that we would then send our RFP to. Um, so they've, they've gone through this process to see who actually has the technical capabilities to produce a plan, so that way they've kind of narrowed the field for us. We send that RFQ out to their, pretty much their entire list, and then we pick for ourselves based on the responses that we get. As long as it's somebody that's on their pre-approved list, they're okay.
Listen, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else um, care to uh, join um, with questions? Do I understand correctly, uh, Mr. Treesenberg, that essentially uh, what we're asking council to do tonight is uh, I guess we're asking council to agree on the staff moving forward with the application process? Is that essentially the action you're looking for?
That's correct, that would be correct. That would be the next step. It is a competitive process, so it's still subject to us making the application. Again, I would just remind, it's not a tremendously laborious application, it's not something that we have to spend a lot of time on, although we'll, we'll definitely make sure it's as good a application as we can make.
Sure, okay, okay. Um, all right, uh, council, unless you have other questions of Mr. Treesenberg or comments, uh, I will entertain a motion as to council's desire in regards to moving forward with the application process. Um, I've noted uh, comments from several of you. I think there, personally, I think there are some advantages uh, to move ahead, but uh, obviously, council is, uh, will need to make the decision. Is there a motion?
Well, having some initial reservations about this and still not jumping up and down about it, I do see some of the benefits that can come from it, and uh, we have certainly seen how our sidewalks have been heavily used uh, during the stay-at-home orders and will continue to be heavily used uh, as long as as people are getting from here and there and of course, using and visiting our parks, so and because we'll be allowed a lot of input, uh, working with the consultant and a subcommittee, I'll, I'll move that we'll uh, we will proceed forward with this, and as staff noted, we won't uh, this won't be awarded to the point where this wouldn't be in in the twenty one, twenty twenty one budget, it'd be in the twenty one, twenty two budget.
Yes.
Okay, I'll put that in the form.
We'll bring funding options.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Singleton, thank you very much and for your uh, for your comments as well. Uh, so the motion is before us, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Vance. Uh, motion made in second. Any other concerns, questions, or comments before we vote? Hearing none, I will ask the council to vote on the motion. All those uh, who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to motion, please say no. Okay, and the motion carries, uh, with Mr. Dellinger being absent by four oh vote, so uh, thank you very much, um, council for thinking that through, and I think uh, that's uh, that's uh, uh, a good action that you've taken, I believe.
Mr. Marsper, may I add, may I add one follow-up just to let council know?
Yes.
We will, we will, you may see a um, uh, either a resolution or a letter of endorsement for the application on a consent agenda on one of the two June meetings, and I'll get with staff to confirm which format that needs to be in. But if it's okay with the council giving your action tonight, we'll just put whatever the necessary document is for approval on a, uh, one of the June agendas.
Sounds, sounds good to me. Council, have any concern?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
That's for sure, okay. All right, following our agenda, we will now go back to what was item one, Development Finance Initiative, DFI. Um, I believe uh, Maury Howe is a presenter here, and she has some persons with her whom I'm sure she will introduce.
Um, thank you, council members. Um, I'd like to introduce uh, Rory, Rory Dowling and Matt Crook um, from the Development Finance Initiative. Um, they'll be giving a presentation tonight um, that covers sort of their, the final findings of their site analysis for the development pad in downtown Garner. Um, they will be presenting um, a sort of a, a final, you know, assessment of that site for you guys to consider. Um, and I don't know that we're, we need any action this evening, we're mostly just looking for any feedback. Um, what will happen after they give this presentation and take any feedback is that they will begin working on the request for proposals. Um, and then action will be taken when that is complete down the road. Um, but for, so for this evening, they're just going to um, do some present, give you a presentation on the um, financial feasibility of the site development. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to turn it over to Matt Crook.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. Are you able to hear me all right?
Yes. Yes, coming through well, thank you, sir.
I'm going to try and share my presentation with you all. Um. One second.
Can you all hear me as well? This is Rory Dowling.
Yes.
Excellent, just want to make sure.
Thank you.
I'm getting a uh, and a message saying that I have to close out in order to share my screen, so one second, bear with me.
Okay. I might just comment, we've, we've done just enough of these virtual meetings to understand that occasionally an effort to put something on the screen and I might run into a slight problem, so we, we're pretty patient with that.
Well, this is my first time presenting on, on um, Teams, and so it asks for permissions that I have not yet granted it, so um, I think that might be part of the issue.
Okay. Mr. Rory Lance is our in-house expert. He probably wouldn't want me to refer to him that way, but uh, he might could answer a question that's uh, in regards to an item on the screen. Is that right, Mr. Rory Lance?
Yeah, it, from, from our end, it looks like you should have permission, but um, possibly that's not the case, but it does, it does not look like there's anything pending on my end that I have to grant you access to. I think it has to do with uh, my computer allowing this PowerPoint to come up, but I think it shows it's coming up now. Um. And as that's happening, I'll, I'll just go ahead and introduce uh, or introduce what we'll be talking about. Um, as Maury mentioned, uh, DFI has been engaged here for um, quite a few months now, and we're somewhat coming to uh, a culmination with our analysis on the development site that's next to the rec center. Um, we have done our site analysis and our financial feasibility analysis, and so this is the time where we start talking about options before putting together materials that will then take out to the development community. Um, are you able to see what I'm presenting now? It should be the title slide of the presentation.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay. Um, and for the interest of time, I'm going to quickly go through kind of the, the first part. A lot of it is information you've already received before about who DFI is and this project. I will want to walk through our site analysis highlights, uh, program considerations, our financial analysis, do a, a quick overview of that, and then really um, get feedback. We, we're, we're interested to hear what what council is thinking um, and and what their thoughts are about some of these uh, site uh, and the different sites that we're going to be presenting or, or site constraints and things like that, and um, how we might be able to move forward, um, taking that to the development community. So as I mentioned, this is the opportunity site that's next to the rec center. This is talking about DFI's pre-development plan. Um, I'm on slide five now, that's looking at where we are in our project process, so we're right before, you know, we're going to get some, some information from you all as far as what the, the final program would, would need to look like, and then we will come back again uh, to have your approval to move forward with our RFP to solicit developers, and so that's where council will actually um, need to approve us moving forward and, and approve the materials that we put together next. Uh, last time we spoke, I, I was there in person with Rory, and we uh, discussed the market analysis. Um, just to, you know, go back and and revisit what we found there. Um, there's limited multifamily growth downtown, um, low retail vacancy, a lot of retail um, is, is there present. Um, and then strong growth, uh.
Could I, Mr. Wood, could I interrupt for just one moment? I'm not sure, I, I'm seeing a blank screen at this point on my computer, and I, and maybe I'm the only one.
No, I'm, I'm seeing a blank screen too.
Okay, I, I, I see a program. I see it.
I, I see it as well.
Okay.
You're fine on my end also.
It says market analysis summary.
Mine says nothing.
That's what I see.
Matt, do I need to say hit take control? I'm sure I don't.
But the, the slides are in your agenda packet, so.
Yeah, yeah, I have the. Yeah, okay, we can, we can do that.
Sorry about that. Um, I, I'll, I'll reference the slide number that I'm on to that. Um, if you know, if somebody's falling through paper copy, then um, that, that should suffice. This will be the same presentation.
Okay.
Um, and and also what we noticed with the, with the office uh, locally is that there's been a, a recent growth and, you know, historic growth, uh, so there's a supply there, but um, a lot of that is um, not Class A, it's, it's, you know, it, it's uh, office supply that's in the shopping centers and and more uh, vehicle kind of more car-dependent type office space, um, not necessarily downtown office space. I will quickly mention our guiding public interest. These are council-endorsed, but as we're going through our, our analysis and our process, these are the things that we heard from um, the DGA board, um, from staff, from you all, as uh, what, what is really going to make a successful program and a successful project, so um, things like existing uh, leveraging the existing urban fabric, so what's, you know, taking kind of part of the wave that is happening in downtown Garner with some redevelopment and uh, you know, helping contribute to this unique sense of place, providing downtown five, five P M. to nine P M. amenities, so these are uh, you know, could be a restaurant or drinking establishments, um, but, but things that attract uh, folks of all ages, um, attracts people into downtown Garner. Um, explore different types of, of spaces, so retail, office, residential, we've explored all of those. And that, a lot of that is going to be covered tonight when we walk through our, our site analysis. Um, and then finally maximize private investment while um, optimizing public investment. So our goal here is to um, find, you know, wh- what's going to be uh, financially feasible from a private enterprise standpoint, that's not going to require uh, the town of Garner to uh, to fund that um, that program or that development um, more than it should. I'll quickly move into our site analysis. Um, what this is, we, we, we use a lot of desktop tools, but we also uh, visit the site and we develop these high-level concepts, these layouts or massings. I will, I will stress that word, it's high level. Um, these are not design renderings by any chance, they're not architectural um, standards or anything like that. These are just to understand the uh, size and scale um, of what, what different types of uh, um, of uh, buildings could go there, massings. So there are some known site constraints. Um, the, the site is limited to, it's a maximum building footprint. Um, there is some existing topography, and then also parking will be a constraint, because if you're to um, if you're to maximize the building footprint on, on the site, um, there is really limited room for onsite parking. So let's walk through each one of these constraints in a little bit more detail. Um, so with the, with the large, you know, with the maximized building footprint, there's really no space for onsite parking. Um, we're looking at roughly thirteen thousand square feet in, in space. Um, and we have to work within existing rec center buildout, so there's a, a dumpster location, utilities and infrastructure that's buried underneath um, along the um, sidewalk there to the north of the parking. Um, and then access issues, so how, how might folks be able to access this building either from Main Street or from the parking lot? Um, DFI through the work, through the DGA board contracted with Kimberly Warren to really analyze the site grade and structural elements, uh, because this is not a flat, top, topographically flat site. Um, there'll either have to be some excavation, and there were some things that were above our pay grade when it comes to structural engineering that we wanted, uh, we needed some answers to. Um, for instance, uh, you know, what, what would that cost to look like, uh, you know, structurally, if, if, if one kind of building even go here, um, what type of retaining walls would be needed, what type of uh, other types of buildout and, and um, cutout um, type of apartments would be, would, would be there. Um, so we looked at three different scenarios there, and what we kind of came down to was a um, a partial cutout situation where you would be able to have some underneath parking of the building. Um, and that would be the, would, would be the most cost-effective way to include parking and then also be able to, to structurally shore up the building. And finally, uh, parking constraints, um, you know, besides the, the potential parking for underneath or in a basement of the building, there is no onsite parking. Um, you know, next door, there's a hundred and seventy-two spaces for parking, but it's, it's unknown whether or not how these spaces will be u- used throughout the year and used by the rec center. Um, you know, this is something that we'll, we'll come back to later in our presentation, but um, this is definitely the, one of the biggest constraints for any type of development is going to be parking and what current parking requirements there are. Any questions before I go into our? Any questions before I go into our program considerations?
I can see this slide.
I can see it now too.
All right. So DFI, we, we analyzed three different program considerations. Again, this is a massing that's done in a program called SketchUp. They're not indicative. It's not, we're not trying to design it with a blue basement and a yellow or residential above red retail or anything like that. This is just simply to get a size of what, you know, what, what could go there. Here are the three different options. So on each of these options, we are, we are anticipating ground floor to have parking. Maybe some potentially additional storage space. The first floor would be retail. So about 12,000 square feet of retail. And then above the retail would be two floors of either condo apartment or office. So it would not be.
Just to clarify, by, by ground floor, that means the, the ground floor at grade, you know, back behind the building, the first floor is actually at grade along Main Street. So the retail would all be at grade to Main Street there.
Thanks for the clarification. Yep. But we didn't analyze, say, office on the second floor above retail and then apartment above that. We think that having too many mix of uses is actually would, would, would not help the, the building. So let's dig into our, the program details for condo. This will be four cell units, about 18 units. You can see there's a mix of, of sizes from one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom. So 900 to 1600 square feet. This is considering that there would be parking underneath. And so the development cost for condos would be about 7.6 million. But each one of these, we, we anticipate an average sales about $235 dollars a square foot or a range between 240 and 325. Apartment, you might not have could tell that I changed the slide, but on slide 18, this is, is more units. So it's actually shrinking down the size per unit. So you'd have about eight studios, four one bedroom, 14, 800 square foot one bedrooms and then four two bedrooms. So 30 total units between the two floors. 24 new spaces. Price would be about 880 to $1,600 a month in rent. And the development cost goes slightly down to maybe 7.5 million. These are pretty indicative costs, but that's what we're, what we're showing. And finally, office, this is more expensive construction. You would have two floors of office. It could be depending on the tenant or the, the makeup of tenants, could have a number of different units. But here, you know, a developer would be looking at an average rent of $20 a square foot. This would be what we would consider class A office space, branding office space for those, those companies that are small to midsize that are looking to either expand their presence in Garner or move into downtown Garner. For each one of these, by code, there's parking requirements. And for residential, we're looking at 42 to 55 spaces, depending if it's condo or apartment use. Again, this is by number of bedrooms and total number of units. And then for office, you can see there's 85 required spaces. So one space per 300 gross floor area. So 85 total spaces for that type of program. And as you could see onsite, what we were able to park is about 24.
Back, go back, go back to that real quick. I just want to make point out that the, the retail numbers down there are what is required by code. Right now in downtown, you all have made a lot of concessions for downtown retail where thereby you don't really hold your current retail restaurant tenants to this standard because you do have the street parking there. And so for what we have assumed is that not be accommodating parking for retail uses for this development and that they would use existing street parking as current retail tenants are using. But the, the big takeaway here is that the parking requirements for office versus residential are, are, are really double. And, and even if you were to give some leeway to that 85 space required for office, your tenants, your office tenants are still going to want about one space per 300 gross floor areas, 300 square feet. So there are far more stringent parking requirements for office than residential development.
And it can work the opposite direction too. As Rory mentioned, if there's, say there was no requirement for parking per office, the tenant and the tenant uses and the financing for the office space might require a certain number of onsite parking in order to support the, the loan for that product. So that's why you'll see medical offices usually require a lot more parking per square foot and therefore they're typically suburban in nature where they can have a lot of surface parking. So it just really depends on the type of use and the type of office user. Now I'll go into the financial analysis. So we created performance for each one of these different uses or these different program considerations. What we took into factor here is construction cost. I mentioned this a little bit with office and just the different cost of construction for office, other financing cost, and then also rent and sell price sensitivity. Some of our assumptions going into these are maximizing the building footprint in order to really drive revenue on the site. There's going to be some, some cost just with, with building on the site that in order to really maximize the, the investment, you'll want to maximize the footprint. We're limiting the height to three stories. And then also assuming kind of the Kimberly Horn recommendation here, which is partial, parcel, parcel, partial basement parking underneath the building. And then we also make a, a, an assumption that the developer will have to lease parking from the town or for somebody else. But we include parking costs from, from having to lease additional spaces somewhere else offsite.
From the town.
And so what we, what we gather here is this, this chart with financial feasibility and what we modeled, you can see either are in line or just in line with what private development returns are required. So for instance, condo, you know, we're, we're right there within a margin range. Apartments just under could be very close. And then office just under as well, but the cash on cash requirements there typically 10% or higher. We're, we're very close to that. This does not factor in opportunity zone investment scenarios. And that, that is an important thing because there, there are interests, you know, with, with folks investing in opportunity zone development. So this could be a worthwhile. Rory, what do we typically see about three to 5% increase on the, the returns for investors when they're doing opportunity zone investment?
Probably closer to two, three percent.
Two to three. Okay.
So the takeaway here is that in the baseline scenario, right, with no public participation on this project, other than what's already been done, each of these scenarios is very close to reaching the return hurdles that we believe are necessary to be attractive to a private developer. And, and so that's, that's the takeaway from the slide is that, that, that each project is very close to being financially feasible on its own.
There are some considerations for each. So condo and office require about 50% of either pre-sales or pre-lease before construction can begin. This is just in order to get financing for that, that project, you have to pre-sell. And then for, also for condo, there's lack of comparable projects within the market area. We know of the townhomes that are going in just at the end of downtown. But that will be interesting to kind of look at and see how, you know, folks are, are buying those properties. For apartments, you know, there's, there's kind of a residential operating expense inefficiency with only 30 apartment units. So there are things that, you know, that an apartment developer has to pay for or owner has to pay for, whether or not it's 30 units or 150 units, but when it's 30 units, they can't spread that cross, cost across multiple different units and revenue streams. So, and then also offsite parking needs might be met, you know, with, with apartments, with, with shared parking. But then with office, that parking is really, you know, that really necessitates offsite parking somewhere or additional parking because of the, the number of required parking. So when we think about that, there are some public, private participation considerations. We mentioned the site redesign and dumpster relocation. We're, we're thinking maybe 10 to $20,000 to do that. Seller financing of the parcel. This is one way that a town can participate is by doing seller financing or a loan to the development. This loan would be at a market rate. So the town would actually potentially make money off of selling the parcel instead of just selling it outright. And then also, you know, one consideration we, 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 we've talked about this with the DGA board and with staff. Not sure if this would exist or not, but if, if the town had office space requirements or needs, they could look at either pre-leasing or being a signatory for that office space. You know, this is basically like guaranteeing or being a cosigner for a lease at, at those terms. And, you know, that's taking a big. That's assuming that you're, you're very comfortable and very willing to see office space go in there and, and, and fill that. It will, will get leased out so that the town will actually not have to, to pay any of that lease. And then finally, parking, parking is another way that the public can participate, either by reducing parking requirements as, as Rory mentioned for retail, but then maybe for some of the other uses. Shared parking with the rec center and then also surface parking, parking or onsite structured parking. So we'll, we'll kind of dive into the parking needs a little bit more now. On slide 27, I'm pulling back up those numbers with the parking required according to the, the ordinance. And what is that net need? So for condo, that's 18. For apartments, it's 31 and for office, it's 61. Again, does this not include the retail parking requirements? So.
Okay, just again, the, the takeaway here is that regardless of which program you all were sort of moving forward with, there's going to be additional parking needs in each of those scenarios. And so that's why we're, we're going to be diving into a little bit more about parking. Because right now, none of the programs have a parking program that, that is feasible.
So next to the rec center, next to the, the development opportunity, there's the rec center. We've heard through the DGA board when we presented this information that 42 spaces were potential flex use for the town. Again, this is, we have no data or no information about how the rec center is being used. And if those 42 extra spaces above the required number of spaces for the center would be, would be needed or should be used. Another, some, some interesting facts about shared parking. If it's condo or apartment, we're looking at daytime versus nighttime parking uses. So rec, the rec center might have certain hours of operation. Whereas if you're a residential user, you're, you're, you'll tend to park your car at night and leave in the morning. You know, there's some studies and math that we can do for that to understand the shared, shared amount. If it's office, then a lot of times those users are during the day. But again, we're, it's still to be determined how the rec center will truly use the parking. And so we really don't know what the shared parking might be in order to move forward. And then, so slide 29, if we're not really sure about shared parking on the rec center site, we start to look at other sites that the town has under control that could be potential for parking. P1, which is a long Rand Mill Road, had been identified as an updated area for parking. Kimberly Horn had done some analysis and some engineering there. It included also streetscape improvements and things like that. But this is a very costly paved parking lot, mainly because of stormwater and some elevation issues. So it's some top topography requirements, things like that. So for 60 spaces, the cost was about $600,000 for P1. For P2, you know, this is a few acres that are just south of the rec center. We're anticipating gravel lot there. Again, we have not done any type of like full on analysis. We've just really used high level wheels of thumb to, to, to say how many spaces we think could go there. But say there's about 100 spaces and about $4,500 of space in gravel, for gravel parking. That would include entries and things like that, but that would be about $450,000. And then P3, again, we were just, you know, we had, we had looked into extending other options. So P3 was another option of looking at adding a few diagonal parking spaces or, or parallel parking spaces next to the site. And that would, we think that's pretty costly, about $500 per linear foot. So about 5,000 per space there for only seven spaces. So that really doesn't help us with, with getting to those requirement numbers. So one thing that Mr. Dillinger brought up in our DGA board review was talking about maybe extending out the parking above ground. And this is something that we were looking into as well and like tabletop parking. So this would be a partial structure. So the, the parking would be accessed off of Main Street. And folks would drive in beside the building. It would allow for additional 100 or so spaces on top of the 24, I believe, underneath the building. We're anticipating a higher cost, so about 1.25 million there. But that would, you know, satisfy the requirements for the uses there. It would also allow for additional parking for downtown uses. But this is just another concept that we were, we were looking at.
Yeah. And this, the concept came out, as Matt noted out of conversations with DGA board previously and council member Dillinger. This was, you know, more forward thinking about, okay, if there really is a desire for additional parking in downtown Garner at this time, this could be an opportunity to, to account for those additional needs down the road. It certainly does go above and beyond what would be needed for any program on our side.
One thing that we do want to make sure is, is noted is that, you know, the town would be receiving parking revenues from the developer. It's not just providing parking and allowing the developer to, to access that parking. So for instance, office, if it's 61 spaces at $25 a space, you're looking at a lease annual revenue of about $18,000. That would go to support any type of debt or funding for the, the upfront investment or the upfront parking cost.
This doesn't take into account. This doesn't take into account any hourly revenue either. We didn't want to make an assumption that you all would start charging for parking downtown.
Let me pause there because I know that the, you know, maybe we should talk about parking and then, um, get into re, program recommendations or recommendations and next steps. Um, are there any questions? Do, or does anyone want me to go back to a, a slide, a previous slide?
Okay, continue.
Okay. Um, so we think we should present all three of these scenarios to the development community. Um, this is a very interesting site. It's, I think, what we're gonna hear is, is what's going to work best for the development community and not necessarily say, you know, push them one direction or another. Um, but we'd also don't want, you know, the town to necessarily have to commit itself to, um, uh, an amount of public investment, um, before knowing what the development community sees potential for the site. So, um, just take into consideration, um, that depending on the developer and depending on, uh, what their vision is, they might be asking for things like shared or new parking, they might be asking for seller financing, the dumpster to be relocated, um, or even pre, pre, pre-lease assistance for the office. Um, those are some likely scenarios that we could see where, um, a developer could come to the town and say, we really want to do an office, but we need X, Y, and Z.
And, and, and a lot of, I want to, I want to note that a lot of communities we work in and we go through this process, we end up, uh, asking council to, to approve certain public participation measures. Uh, because of the attractiveness of the site, because of how close these projects are modeling right now to financial feasibility, um, we don't think that's necessary at this time, uh, for you all to take any action and, and sort of endorse any public participation. That's not saying that there will not be asked from the private sector because there always are, for sure, but, um, we, we think these projects are, are, are very close to financial feasibility and attractiveness to the private sector. And so at this time, um, we don't think it's necessary for you all to come, to commit to anything.
And so if there weren't any, um, complications or any reservations, what, what DFI would do, and we're actually currently under, um, currently drafting the solicitation, but we will update it and, and, and what we want to do is draft the solicitation based on your feedback and guidance. Um, and then we would come back at a later date, um, to provide the solicitation for approval. Uh, and then that will help, you know, we'll also look to you all for, for guidance on when to release this, um, based on market conditions. Uh, and then we will do the process, we will do our development outreach. Uh, we have been speaking with developers throughout this process. Um, a few have come to Garner, um, to Mari and folks to, to inquire or ask about the property. Um, but we, we are continually talking to them and, and, and getting feedback, but not necessarily asking them to, to come in and, and provide any type of, uh, you know, we're not, we're not taking any bidders right now, so to speak. Um, and then we'll do our evaluation process. Um, so that's, this would be kind of the standard next steps. Um, are there any questions about this or any questions about the, um, the recommendations?
Okay, Council, I, I think I was out of the, uh, audio loop there for a few minutes, but, um, I know, uh, Mr. Vance, you asked him to continue. Any, any, uh, questions by other council members, comments?
I, I would like to ask a question. What, uh, sort of developers have been interested, shown interest thus far?
Um, so we've had, um, some conversations with folks that are local, um, local to the Triangle area. Um, one, one person is actually using new market, or not new market, but, um, opportunity zone funds. Um, so they're looking at opportunity zone investments. Um, but that, that I think is the, where we thought the development community would be, are folks that know Garner, know Raleigh, and know kind of the surrounding area. Um, and they know the story there, so, um, it, it, it's tending to kind of align with our original assumptions there.
Are they-
When we-
Go ahead.
Uh, that's okay, I, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted, I wanted to add that, uh, when we, when we go out with our full solicitation, we will be casting a very large net. Um, you know, not just, uh, developers around the Triangle, but regional. Um, I will say that during, given the size of this development, right, being sort of under that, uh, ten million dollar mark, and because of the location, uh, we're, we're likely to get more traction with folks that are already developing in the Triangle area that know, uh, about Garner's appeal and know the relationship and how close it is to Raleigh. Um, so we would expect interest to come predominantly from, uh, from local players.
Okay, well, I think I may have not expressed my question correctly. Are, are we talking about, have you had more interest from, uh, for commercial or, uh, for residential?
Um, we haven't gotten that far down in, in the conversation. I think folks are interested in the site. Um, I think the commercial aspect, the retail on the bottom will be there. I think people are interested in that. Um, but as far as if it would be apartment or condo above or, um, office above, uh, we haven't gotten any type of, um, clear indication as far as what, you know, if there's, if everybody's leaning one way or another.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have a, uh, a comment, uh, based off slide twenty-eight, talking about potential for shared parking. One of the concerns I've had all along, and I mentioned it when we saw the footprint of the rec center, was that we don't have enough parking for the rec center. And I base this off of having participated and been a coach in youth basketball here and also my son playing, and going out at games, uh, at both, uh, North Garner, East, uh, at all three places, North Garner, East Garner, and Avenue Street and counting cars during games. And, you know, when you've only got one gym and one car and you've got seventy-five to ninety-five cars out there, and we got three gyms, the math does not add up. And I have stated that to begin with, we don't have enough parking for the rec center. If you've got three games going on, even if they're staggered, you always have the game going on, but you've got people who are leaving the preceding game and coming later for the following game. And, you know, look, don't hear about daytime and nighttime parking. In the summertime, the, the town's basketball leagues were played during the week at night, and practices were on weekends. That way, kids, if they are in town, could be here for the games, but if they're out of town on the weekend, would miss a practice. Um, I know, it, it's, it's just, it's an odd mix because the rec center, and it's, that's not done three sixty-five, it's done during certain seasons, of course. And you'd have volleyball here, you might have night camps, who knows what we might have. Uh, so the, the parking is an issue for the rec center. And, you know, to put a, a potential project down there is going to be even more, uh, uh, an issue. I know, you know, one, one time the folks said, well, off of, uh, off of Montague Street, off Parker Street, there's parking the town can use from, uh, from the Lions Club, but it's not paved. Well, we got an eight million dollar gym, but we're gonna make the park sitting there on Parker Street. You know, they can walk in on that nice wooden floor with parking on, on a gravel or dirt parking lot, so that's an issue too. Um, and looking at P-two, we don't know, you know, the town, we talked about doing a splash pad, and that's going to potentially talk about as a splash, splash pad location at P-two, but that's nothing, that's nothing definite at all. So parking is an issue, period. The tabletop parking is intriguing because you can get more cars there, and it can benefit both parties. Um, that's, you know, I, I mentioned this also about how they've done it in other towns. I mentioned Boiling Rock, if I said that Boiling Rock can build two parking decks Garner can using topography, and that's exactly what they did. Um, one question, you said you, you tapped this out at three stories. I'm just curious, because if, if something like a tabletop parking was to be considered in the cost, uh, would another story be beneficial, say, if you did condos? Because even though it requires a few more for parking, um, you know, there's, there's more, you know, potential, there's more rent there. I'm just trying to maximize what we have from a financial standpoint because this is an expensive proposition, of course, to do something like this. Uh, but again, both the development site and the rec center would benefit for it because I think you said this would generate about a hundred, yeah, a hundred spaces. And a hundred spaces is better than what we have. Uh, and it's, it's right beside the rec center and, of course, to this property, so parking is an issue, and I just wondered if, if, if a project came along, I'm just, I'm just wondering if another story would, would create enough extra revenue to help with paying for some of these parking improvements, if something like this had to be considered here or somewhere else in that area.
I think we'll have to go back and look at the, there, there could have been a requirement that has to be less than three stories or height requirement. Um, but I'll have to check with, um, Mari to make sure.
Mr., Mr. Singleton, I, I think where the two to three stories came from is, um, before any cost factors were taken into consideration, there'd always been a vision that the Main Street, street frontage would start at about the two-story height that it currently is to transition the historic district down past the rec center and then grow your, um, grow your height there. Um, there, there's always, there's not a cap on us going higher. I think it would just be making sure that we could do something that does not look out of place, um, for, for the area that is in. There are some opportunities that we've envisioned for going much higher, three and four stories. Um, if you had opportunities to redevelop the Lions Club property, the, the GBI property, those, those sites that we've talked about that may be long-range redevelopment opportunities.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. I'll, I'll, I'll add on to, um, what John was saying. We, we were, uh, we were, we were staying within three-story height limit intentionally on the front end, uh, to sort of stay uh, urban fabric, it's already along Main Street. It is, is absolutely something we can look at to, to go above three stories. And I, I will tell you, uh, you know, the, the economics of each project and each program do get better. The more density you can provide on site, uh, to accommodate for the underground parking costs, to accommodate for the site costs, everything else. So the, the more density you provide, the more units you get, the more, uh, office space you get, the more revenue you're going to have to offset the development costs. Um, but it is, uh, you know, we, we didn't want to presume that we could go above three stories until we got that direction. Um, I'll also add that, uh, you know, by increasing the development size, you're, you're increasing your, your tax access value, right? It's going to generate more revenue for you. So, um, that's one thing that is not shown in that parking revenue numbers is, is obviously the, the tax access value that you're getting from this development, uh, which obviously helps offset the, uh, potential development cost for public parking. So, a way of saying, yes, uh, the, the higher the building goes, the more, uh, the more feasible the project becomes, uh, and the more revenue you're going to get to, to offset the parking cost of the, um, the garage.
With that, uh, location where you got, as I see it here, you've got, uh, two levels of, is that two levels of building there in the yellow? Uh, uh, to go up to three, you know, you're farther enough out of the historical side, I'm thinking over there. Uh, could you not go three with that not, would not, that not work there to get, get us where we'd want to be?
That, that is three, Phil, the red is, is Main Street level, so that's three stories right there.
Okay.
I was inquiring about going even higher, uh, another story.
Okay.
I believe they, I believe they stated this, this reduces the footprint of the ground floor retail by half because the parking goes inside part of it, but it also-
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct, so your, your retail footprint decreases from about twelve thousand five hundred to, uh, about seventy-five, seven thousand.
Now, Mr. Singleton, something that we've not talked about, but, um, you mentioned here or somewhere, one other thought that we could at least, um, potentially let DFI think about, while it's not in the scope of their work, we do have a couple of other town-controlled, um, parcels nearby that I guess if the, if the right project came along that knew that there was another way to, um, to develop in other places and all of this parking be shared, that might be one thing we could, we could talk to DFI about is, um, the, the potential for us to offer other properties that could be developed by the same developer, should that help them spread some of their development costs and return back.
And I'll also add that having, um, doing the parking at the same time as a, as the development, um, being able to couple the two ends up being a, a bigger benefit versus trying to develop the parking in isolation by itself somewhere else. Um, because when it's tied and when it's on-site, it's more attractive for the developer versus off-site, even if it is structured parking. Um, that sometimes is, you know, harder for them to kind of convince residents to, that they need to walk a block away or anything like that. Office users is a little different. Um, but as, as John was mentioning, if, you know, this tabletop parking option is, is pretty much tied into the rec center as well as this development and potentially other, um, other downtown development.
And I'm making the assumption, and this is just an assumption looking at this, that the access on this tabletop, because it's not a deck, it's tabletop, is direct access off Main Street. Is that correct between the two buildings?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Make sure I was looking at it right. I kept looking at it thinking, this has got to be directly off Main Street. Just want to make sure, thank you.
And also to allow you to, to most likely keep the majority of the infrastructure that's already in place below.
Yeah, we, we were definitely wanting to make sure that that, that right away, basically the drop-off area is, is still there because we realize that that was, that is intentionally built the way it was, um, um, for the side door there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, uh, questions, comments, uh, from other council members?
Uh, yes, in reference to the ex, additional parking, is we also possibly considering an extra floor? An extra floor and to be studied? In addition to what we currently have here, going up higher, up higher?
I think what we could do is look at-
Yeah, that's absolutely something we can, we can analyze. It's, it's very easy for us to, to do that.
Okay, that's all I have.
I think-
Go ahead, Phil.
You went with more than just that one level, say, let's take the argument two levels. Um, that would give us, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, what, another hundred spaces or what are we talking about?
Are you referring to adding another level of, of parking on top of this, the tabletop?
Yes, sir.
If you added another level, you would probably get an additional, um, call it sixty, sixty to seventy spaces, because then now you're talking about more, uh, uh, structure needed to get, that gets in the way of the spaces. Um, you lose that tuck-under parking there beneath the, the second level of the residential. Um, so you, you know, and, and the, the cost to go up starts to, um, you know, you, because you've got to put a ramp as well to get to that next level. Um, so it gets a little bit, you, you start to lose some of the efficiency of just the tabletop scenario there.
Okay.
The advantage of the tabletop is you're using the to, to, topography, using Main Street to get to one level, and you come around off of Montague or, uh, Purvis Street to get to the other level. So you're using the, the topography as a benefit.
That's exactly right. Well said.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Let's see, I believe we pl, we, we paused you there, uh, uh, let's see, you, you forgotten who, uh, who was presenting there, I need to look back at the name, but, um, if you want to proceed, that'll be good.
Yep, I can, um, it sounds like, you know, there's, there's a consideration of an additional floor if the parking would still be supporting the, the, the building with, or the additional parking for the tabletop. What we could do for an additional floor there, um, that's office or if that's condo or residential, uh, apartment. And then, um, secondly, um, sounds like the consideration is also to, to think about all three of the uses. Um, any other things? I mean, what we'll do is, um, I mean, Rory, what's, what's probably a better next step? Is that just to reply, you know, get this information back to John and socialize it and then, then, um, move forward from there? Um,
Yeah.
How do we want to incorporate it into the-
John and Mari offline, uh, and, and talk about, uh, next steps on our end. Um, and we'll, we will probably need some additional feedback from you, although on, on when you all want this to go out to market. We'll talk with John about that, John and Mari.
So, so Mari, am I understanding correctly? Uh, yeah, okay. This is, well, presented this evening, uh, with, with feedback that has been offered, but, uh, no other formal action required, uh, tonight? Am I right?
That's correct.
And Mayor and Council members, one of the big questions out there about this is when, when to release this out to the development community and not knowing what the disruption that COVID-19 might have brought forward. We didn't want to wait until that was over or different to bring this step to you. So we went ahead with this step. Um, we'll get, if it's okay with everyone, we'll let DFI start working on the solicitation while they're also bringing back a couple of other options that we can probably share with you, give them feedback. And then council will know that we then will, at that point, will have things ready. Um, with your approval, we could decide when the most advantageous time is to put this out to the development community.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
That sounds good.
I, I agree, because, uh, you know, uh, when lose a draw, development's going to happen to what capacity we're at. And I think as quick as developers, developers can, uh, see where potential properties or development could be, uh, is probably in their favor and our favor too. So, uh, um, it's just a thought.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, I don't want to rush us through this, but, uh, want us to, to, to move on as we, uh, as we are ready.
Appreciate the time, Cooks.
Yeah, thanks to, to Matt and Rory for being with us tonight.
Yes, thanks, Matt and Rory.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And, uh, Mari, anything else you, uh, you want to add?
Um, I just appreciate you guys hearing from DFI tonight. Um, the DGA board has been participating with, um, getting sort of that feedback from them before it's come to you guys. And I'm really excited to hear that you guys are interested in learning more about, you know, if adding both the tabletop as a, um, you know, as an option and the potentially an additional story, because I do think that will be a good addition for downtown. Um, as Mr. Matthews was saying, um, the development interest is definitely picking up. And I think that we're seeing that even through the COVID crisis. Um, so we're excited to have them move forward with solicitation. And I just appreciate all the feedback that you guys gave this evening and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you and thank you for all your diligent, uh, work with the DGA and, uh, you know, um, many ways we've come a long ways from, uh, where we started a number of years ago. So, uh, this is pretty exciting stuff, I think. Okay, uh, thank you very much. Uh, if that's everything, uh, council, let me see, uh, are you ready to proceed? Let's go to item, uh, three on the agenda. Uh, the Southern Corridor Project Status Update. And Jeff, is that you or is that, uh, Ms. Gabby?
That will be me. This is Gabby.
Okay, welcome. We're pleased to have you and we'll be pleased to hear from you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, sorry, let me do this. Okay. So, good evening, Mayor, members of the Town Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. And as you've seen, I have a number of items that I'll be presenting this evening, so I will try to keep things brief. Uh, the first matter that I will be presenting on this evening is regarding Wake BRT Southern Corridor. So, wanted to provide an update regarding the current status of the Wake BRT Southern Corridor project as well as schedule modifications that have come about as a result of COVID-19. So as some of you may recall, we had, um, project kickoff a couple of public meetings in, um, late February and early March timeframe, where we informed the public that work was initiating for the Southern Corridor. So now, um, Wake BRT Southern Corridor and the Western Corridor are both advancing on parallel tracks with the route selection phase. And this hurt, this work will help identify a locally preferred alternative or LPA for each corridor. At this time, the LPAs for both corridors are anticipated in the summer, fall 2020 timeframe, which will be immediately followed by project development application through the Federal Transit Administration's Small Start Program. So once project development has initiated, uh, Wake BRT Southern Corridor will begin 0 to 30% design and environmental documentation. And, um, so at work will be starting, um, on this project soon. City of Raleigh and, um, Town of Garner staff have been communicating and coordinating to make sure to get that project off the ground, um, as soon as things start returning back to normal. Um, and I'm sorry, are you guys, are you hearing feedback on my end?
Hearing feedback, but don't know where it's coming from. Now I'm not.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're hearing some.
There is.
Sounds like a whistling tea kettle.
Uh, let me see.
We're not hearing you at all, Gabby.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. No more whistling sound, hopefully. Okay. Sorry about that. Um, okay, well, that was, um, the update for the BRT item. Uh, does anybody have any questions on that?
Questions, council members? Mr. Vance?
You said starting soon. What's starting soon?
Oh, well, um, so City of Raleigh and Town of Garner will begin work to, um, work towards, uh, the selection of a, um, an LPA and there will be coordination required between, um, the town and the city in order to narrow down which LPA will be proceeding.
So Gabby, that, that term, I don't think all the council hears all the time, LPA being a locally preferred alternative. So when we last presented this to you, we showed you several possible routes. You may have remembered some yellow, green, purple and blue sort of spaghetti lines on a map. Um, and that is being narrowed down to sort of two options. And between the City of Raleigh and the Town of Garner, the two municipalities will need to come to a consensus on which is going to be the route, um, that we put together out of all of those different colored strings that were on the last map. And so this election of that would have been about now, and that's being deferred out because of the delays in COVID and not being able to have public meetings. So what will begin soon, Mr. Vance, is picking back up the schedule to get back with both City of Raleigh and Town of Garner and bring you refinements to those routes so that each of the municipalities can endorse a route that, um, is good for them.
Okay, and I believe a survey has already been, uh, circulated in regards to those routes. Is that right?
Yes, that was, um, in conjunction with the, uh, the public meetings and getting the first round of feedback.
Okay.
Have you got much feedback off of that?
Um, yeah, there was, um, good response rate to the first online survey. I'm trying to remember, um, I believe there were more than 200, um, responses to the online survey. And there were some, um, printed out surveys that were completed at each of the, um, each of the public meetings. There was one public meeting in City of Raleigh and one that was held within the Town of Garner. So there were a few that were completed in person.
Any trends showing out of that at this point, or it's too early to tell?
Um, it, yeah, so the feedback at that juncture was meant to have the public understand what some of the, what the trade-offs would be with the different options. So, um, you know, with, with each alternative, there are different implications in terms of how much money would be required to complete them or, um, how much right-of-way, things of that nature. So there's different, there's different elements that are, the public is being asked to consider when they compare the alternatives and we're just wanting to have an open conversation with the public to understand that certain alternatives might take more time, might cost more money. And so, um, uh, there, there wasn't, you know, a clear selection of one alternative, but it was more meant to gather that feedback to help guide the selection process going forward.
And Mr. Matthews and, and other members of council, there's a lot more choices within the Raleigh jurisdiction. When we get down into the Garner jurisdiction, this, um, BRT route comes into our city limits, but just into our city limits. So we're, we're thankful to have it, but because it's just getting into our city limits at North South Station, the, the, the choices Garner will have to make, um, are going to be minimal. It's just that some may be more, more investment from us and some may be more development opportunity. Whereas within Raleigh, the survey, um, there, there's about six different options that people that are in the City of Raleigh could weigh in on. And some of those sort of, uh, weed out by the time you get into Garner's jurisdiction. So a lot more feedback and consideration on some of the options like how close to current existing development would it be versus how close to future new development would it be? Some of those, some of those decisions will not change in Garner, no matter which route we end up with.
Got you. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Singleton or Ms. Behring, do you care to weigh in at this point?
No, I'm fine. I understand.
Me too. Thank you for, uh, the information, Gabby.
Okay, so I believe we're just receiving this as information at this point and no action is needed.
That is correct.
So we are ready, I believe, for item four on agenda and Ms. Gabby will be leading that one as well, is that right?
Yes, yes. So let me pull this up. Um, just wanted to share screen with you. Okay.
Very good.
And are you able to see that?
Yes, we are. I am.
Okay. Correct. So I will be providing, um, project status for Jones Sausage Road. Um, and sorry, excuse me, one second. Okay, so to give, uh, an overview here, um, staff has been working with HDR, which is the on-call consultant that is working on Jones Sausage Road project, um, in order to develop the scope of work and fee for the next task order for the Jones Sausage Road project. And just quickly wanted to provide some context for the schedule that was identified to complete the proposed improvements for Jones Sausage Road. Um, and just wanted that as a refresher and for new council members that might not be familiar with the history of the project. And then I will give a brief explanation of the work that's to be completed in the next task order.
Very good.
Gabby, could I add one point of clarification before you begin? That this is the, for anyone especially watching the meeting, this is for the section of Jones Sausage Road that is, um, that is not including the Amazon improvement. So just want to make sure that that was clear for, for council members and anyone else who was participating.
Correct. Thank you, John. So, um, to, to clarify some of the, the boundaries on that, that's, um, I wanted to share this map. Um, so in orange, I've, I've highlighted the section of Jones Sausage Road where there are planned improvements that I'll be walking you through tonight. And as you can see, the project limits are between the south of the Amazon Distribution Center and it comes down to US 70. So early in 2019, staff developed the schedule for the planned improvements on Jones Sausage Road, which was meant to help coordinate a future application for funding from the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization through the Locally Administered Projects Program and for potential bond referendum that would help to fund this work. So the improvements on Jones Sausage Road are split into two phases, which you can see here. So Phase One is in the, uh, red-orange square and Phase Two in the, uh, golden square. And Phase One refers to the widening of Jones Sausage Road from south of the Amazon Fulfillment Center down to Garner Road. And Phase Two includes the Garner Road and Jones Sausage Road intersection, the grade separation of the railroad and the continuation of the Jones Sausage Road extension to US 70. So work that's to be completed in the next task order. Um, the, the feasibility study was completed through the first task order, which included a conceptual design for Phase One and Phase Two. And this second task order will include work that will complete the construction design for Phase One, 15% design for Phase Two, and it will complete the environmental analysis for both phases. So the design work included in the second task order will allow the town to develop more accurate cost estimates for right-of-way acquisition and for the construction of Phase One. And these has, these estimates are meant to help inform the decision of whether the town will seek lap funding for both right-of-way and construction, or if we will only be seeking funding for construction. And so I just wanted to provide that quick update and to let Town Council know that we will be providing scope and fee and, um, we'll be bringing that back to Town Council in June and asking that, uh, you consider authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement. So we will be bringing that back, um, potentially at the Town Council meeting next week. Um, if not, then mid-June at the latest. So I just wanted Town Council to be aware of that. And, um, if you have any questions on that, I can take that now.
Okay, thank you, Gabby. Um, council members, uh, questions?
Not a question, but just a point of clarification if anyone watching is that Phase One is the town used money from the 2013 bond referendum for road, uh, road projects. The town budgeted 1.2, 1.3 million dollars to conduct this, this, uh, study and, uh, from Jones Sausage all the way as Abby has stated, from the end of the, uh, Amazon fulfillment center to Highway 70 and to the conceptual design of, uh, from Garner Road to 70. And she mentioned the lap funding, which is the, uh, you have to explain the, what it stands for, local area, something, Abby? Gabby, I'm sorry. Explain it for me, please.
It's a locally administered projects, um, program.
Okay, not, yeah, locally administered, I'm sorry, a local area. So, uh, the town put forth that in order to apply for that type of, uh, assistance and grant, that the town has to pay for the study and the conceptual design for the last noted in Phase One and Phase Two. And then I think you stated, when we get these definite numbers, we'll decide whether to apply for construction and right-of-way or just construction assistance.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Because this will be a multi-million, not, not the, the phase from Garner Road to 70, which would be a very expensive project, but the one from the Amazon project to Garner Road will be a multi-million dollar project.
Correct. That one will be the heavier lift.
All right. Thank you for, for, just to clarify that with someone watching it, to know that the town's put forth the money, uh, to move forward with this. And I know everyone wants to know why couldn't you didn't do it with Amazon? Well, you just can't wave a wand and magically have a tree grow that has got multi, multiple millions of dollars on it to construct this project.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Um.
Question, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Just a point of clarification, uh, Gabby. Um, I know that Phase Two of the big issue in this kind of cleared my mind up was getting over the railroad track or under the railroad track. That's somewhat the big issue. Is there a reason? Is there a reason, just so I know, if nobody else, that if you didn't do either, but actually, because you see this on four lanes all the time, where the arms come down, stop signal, and the traffic stops for the train to go through, then they go back up, they can go straight across both ways, is, was that part of the, something being considered in that project? It sure would cartel the calls tremendously, I would think.
So it's part of the feasibility study that was just analyzing whether it made more sense feasibly from financial and just logistic standpoint to go either over or under the railroad tracks. So that feasibility study did not explore the option that you are discussing, no.
Is there a reason for that?
Well, I believe that we were hoping to find whichever improvement would provide the best time savings, both for rail, for the railroad and for traffic, especially given the increased amount of development along the Jones Sausage Road corridor, because the amount of delays on that road are substantial, as I'm sure you're aware. So we were just seeking, you know, an improvement that would help ease that congestion enough.
Mr. Matthews, another way to answer it as well is the railroad is not typically entertaining any additional at-grade crossings. They're actually working, and so is Campo, working to try to get rid of as many of the at-grade crossings as they can. So if you look at the projects that are queued up for scoring in the transportation model, you'll see that almost every one of the at-grade crossings near Garner are all in for potential replacement with a grade separation, grade separated crossing. That corridor can handle as many as four train tracks in the future. And with the commuter rail, there will likely be another track added through there. So because of all of the high-frequency rail traffic there, North County Railroad, Norfolk Southern, their operator, are entertaining any at-grade crossings.
Okay, that explains that. Okay, thank you. Didn't mean to throw you one.
Oh, go ahead.
I said, Gabby, I didn't mean to throw you one like that. I'm known to do it that way.
That's all right.
I'm going to recognize Ms. Behring if she has any questions for comment.
I don't. I understand the presentation. Thank you, Gabby.
Okay, and Mr. Vance, I don't believe I've gone to him yet.
Yes, just a question. What type of environmental document are you anticipating?
Um, so for the, I mean, for the entire corridor, correct? So for the northern corridor, there won't be as much environmental disruption as it will be with, as what you would expect with the southern corridor, where the consultant is preparing for a CE document. And you'll find out if that needs to change as we advance through design.
You started with CE, okay. And Councilman Singleton hit on it in reference to, in your presentation, you mentioned taking up to construction, taking up the construction costs being covered, but the right-of-way cost, how is that being covered?
If we decided to not apply for lap funding, you mean?
Well, I'm asking the question based upon your presentation. I heard construction costs, but I didn't hear right-of-way costs.
Right, so part of what we're trying to determine is if the town is going to seek to apply for right-of-way funding in addition to construction funding. So if we didn't apply for right-of-way funding through the lap program, then the town would be funding that itself. So that's why we're trying to determine how much that would be. Because if it's a manageable amount, there are other potential advantages in that we might be able to advance the project timeline a little bit faster. But that's part of what we need to determine is what that number would be and if that's something that the town would be able to cover through the estimates of what we were already planning on setting aside for this project.
So Gabby, am I correct in remembering that there's about a year difference that we could gain if the town found that it could fund the right-of-way acquisition? We could be funding that, I believe, during, between the time that we apply for the construction funding and the time that we know whether or not we receive the construction funding, which would time approximately along with the planned bond referendum. So the thought was if we were able to afford right-of-way, we might could have a year's head start on the construction process. But if it comes back more expensive, as Gabby said, than we want to take on on our own, there is a function within the lap application to apply for both right-of-way and construction.
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members want to weigh in at this point? Get your questions answered? Okay, again, this is, we're receiving this as information, I believe. No other action necessary at this point in time, right?
Correct.
Let me know. I know Gabby only has one other item. She's had several items here this evening. We've been going about two hours. Does anybody need a quick break of any kind? So we'll do a brief recess, but if not, we have two other items on the agenda. I'm not sure exactly how long it will take, probably not too long, but I'm willing to plunge on ahead if that's the pleasure of the group.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Good.
Let's proceed then with item five on the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Let me just share my screen again for this presentation.
Good.
All right, so last presentation, thank you for hanging in there. Last presentation for me. So Jeff and I will actually be tag teaming this presentation. So he'll handle a few portions and I'll handle the rest. So just wanted to provide an update on progress of the transit study. And just as a refresher of how we came about doing this study, so in 2016, Wake County voters approved a sales tax referendum, funding transit improvements through 2027. A portion of Wake County transit funds are earmarked for the Community Funding Area Program, which is a competitive program to encourage transit projects in areas that aren't sufficiently served by transit. So CFA program funds can be used for planning studies such as this one, or for operating projects that implement new or expanded transit services on the road, and for capital projects like bus stops, benches, and other passenger amenities. So just an overview of what we will be discussing tonight. I will walk you through the study process and then I'll hand over the presentation and Jeff will discuss the bus routing alternatives that were developed through this study. And then we'll give an overview of the routing survey feedback that we had available through an online survey and feedback that we got from stakeholder engagement. And then both Jeff and I will discuss next steps and schedule. So the purpose of the transit study is to identify a community-based transit service that focuses on local needs while complementing regional transit service. And the study will also identify an implementation plan. So here you see our project timeline, and as you can see, we kicked off the project in September. We've since had two rounds of public and stakeholder engagement and we're now wrapping up the study, which includes identifying the preferred alternative, and then with that, identifying capital needs and the final report. So different project elements that went into this included reviewing previous studies, you know, planning work that has been completed through the town or that included plans for the town, evaluating existing conditions, identifying service alternatives, and then developing an implementation plan, performing transit fare evaluation, identifying transit capital investments, which is what the consultant is working on developing at the moment. And then through this, they will help us to develop a funding strategy. So at this point, I will hand it over to Jeff and he will discuss the routing alternatives.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. Thanks, Gabby. Yeah, so if you'll advance to the next slide there. Developing the alternatives, we completed what they called the transit needs analysis. So we looked at where the transit-oriented populations, whether it's the elderly, people who don't drive, folks that may have no access to vehicles, or households that are restricted perhaps to just one vehicle and there's multiple drivers. We looked at commuting patterns, where the origins and destinations are for our local commuters. We analyzed what activity centers, destinations of a commercial nature that folks like to frequent, as well as their employment destination. So when we kind of took all of those factors together, we then were able to identify areas on the map where folks wanted to go. So Gabby, if you'll go to the next slide. And that's what you see here. So again, most of this is along the 70 and Timber Drive corridors. You see the White Oak area to the right of the map in red. You see the North South Station Walmart area to the upper left of the map. You do see a little outlier there at McCullers Crossroads. That is certainly a growing area. And then the others right kind of in the middle of town along Aversboro Road and 50 between Timber and 70 and downtown. So it kind of reinforced a lot of what we already knew, but it was good that the data kind of helped to bear that out and back up some of those assumptions. So from that, we had a couple of sessions and looked at developing alternatives. And the first thing that we did is we looked at the existing Go Raleigh Route 20, which is now in service from Raleigh to Garner. For those of you who may not be familiar with that service real closely, you'll see it comes down Garner Road from downtown Raleigh. And then there's a looping pattern that goes through Garner. And currently, the buses go one way around that loop. So there are some deficiencies for riders, depending on which way that bus is going. Currently, it goes, I believe, counterclockwise. So it seeds down Aversboro to Timber, over to White Oak, and then back to Raleigh using East Garner Road. So there is a, the end of the line is technically White Oak Shopping Center. So if folks are getting on currently, say, along Aversboro Road, they have to first travel to White Oak, sit there for a little while until the schedule catches up, and then proceed on the rest of their journey into downtown Raleigh. The good thing is, is that the frequency of service is scheduled to proceed. We had hoped it was going to be this month, but then with the COVID-19 situation, some of those schedules got delayed. So now currently, we're looking at sometime this fall, that service frequency then overall will increase to 30 minutes. And so once every hour, there will be a bus going in opposite directions around the loop. So thankfully now, there'll be, there will be added clockwise service to the loop. So in the future, someone who lives on Aversboro Road who wants to go to downtown Raleigh can hop on the bus going in the clockwise direction and have a more immediate trip into downtown Raleigh. So that service will be getting in the fall. So with that in mind, again, we looked at the two alternatives. One that was proposed was potentially to kind of negate the need somewhat for that clockwise loop, the second part. So what we are calling the Garner Route One would actually connect North South Station to White Oak Shopping Center, using that primarily that southern portion of the existing Route 20 loop. One of the advantages that was perceived by that was that then the Route 20 could be more frequent, more direct. However, we did kind of come to the conclusion that there were a few disadvantages, and those kind of came out more during the steering committee meetings that we had later on. But that was option one. And then option two was to go ahead and keep Route 20 as it is, continue to have the fall addition of the clockwise loop, and then do service, focus on servicing some additional areas in Garner, as well as having a couple of good overlaps with Route 20 to make transfers potentially a little easier. So we do have, again, White Oak and North South Station serving as the anchor points, but then it takes a different route and is able to pick up service to places like Wake Med, Main Street in downtown, as opposed to Route 20, which is on Garner Road. So that way you get some local service on both sides of the train tracks. And then coming down 50, both routes would go past Town Hall, the library, and the police station, and then further access them again. Both routes go down 70 between Vandora and North South Station with some stops at some of the commercial areas in between. Both routes would have opportunities to serve Amazon with some kind of additional shuttle service or some kind of link service, and both can be coordinated.
Okay, and with that, I will give you an overview of feedback that we've had. So the second round of public engagement, we had an online survey that was available to the public. And in it, we presented the two alternatives that were developed based on feedback from the first round of public engagement. And the survey just tried to identify which of the two options served transit needs for Garner residents and what kind of preferences they have in order for us to get a better sense of how we would develop, or how we would come to a preferred alternative. So we had 156 responses to the online survey. Of those, 29% are transit riders. And as you can see, slightly higher percentage preferred option one, 18% didn't care either In terms of operational preferences, there was a higher demand for peak and midday service, and there was a higher preference for weekday service over weekend service. So this is information that we would use to feed. So this is information that we would use to, to feed whatever decision, the decision of, you know, service hours for whatever alternative winds up getting selected and things of that nature. So there were some comments that were kind of, that kind of stuck out or several people kind of iterated the same, same idea. And with those, there was a comment that option one should include additional stops along Timber Drive. So there was just a lot of feedback showing preference, or not preference, sorry, but interest in having service along Timber Drive. Interest in wanting a better connection from the White Oak Crossing to Go Raleigh Station. And we think that this is what they were getting at with this comment is just having that higher frequency and more convenient option to travel into downtown Raleigh. And also, a lot of, a lot of comments about wanting to make sure that existing stops on Aversborough Road are not affected or removed. So we had a stakeholder virtual meeting in April 20. On April 20th, we had to do that one virtually because this was after COVID-19 and, and all the restrictions that are in place. So we, we sent stakeholders presentation materials prior to the meeting and held the meeting via Microsoft Teams, which allowed people the option to either just call in or to join via computer, phone, tablet, so that they'd be able to follow along with the presentation. So from that meeting, there was a strong preference for, for option two. And so through option two, we're able to provide new service along portions of US 70. It provides new service to Main Street, where currently is none, and direct access to the new rec facility, which was a, a big, a big selling point. And with Go Raleigh's planned service improvements scheduled for the fall of 2020, Route 20 service frequency is going to be improved to 30 minutes. And so from that, we started talking about whether option one would really be necessary. And additionally, option one would require more transfers for, for anybody trying to access essentially the other portion of Route 20. So for example, if you were getting, if you were getting onto option one at North-South Station and wanted to access downtown Raleigh via the Route 20 service, you would have to take option one to White Oak Shopping Center and then transfer onto Route 20 in order to get into downtown Raleigh. So with route, with option one, you could potentially have to deal with more transfers, which obviously is not ideal. So if we were to pursue option one, that would also require that that there be onboard surveys with the existing Route 20 riders, since they would be affected. And Go Raleigh would not be able to change current Route 20 without having some sort of public engagement and notifying current Route 20 riders. So that would add another layer of complication. So based on public and stakeholder feedback, overwhelming support for route option two. As Jeff was saying, it provides new connections from Garner's North-South Station and connects Route 7, Main Street, and US 70. And under this option, Go Raleigh's Route 20 would remain operating as it, as it is today and with the scheduled improvements for fall 2020. Other benefits to option two is that, as we commented, new service to North-South Station, to Main Street and Garner Rec Center. Would provide access to Wake Med Medical Center on US 70. And it overlaps with Go Raleigh service along Seventh Avenue. So now we will go into next steps and schedule. And Jeff will start us off on this discussion and then I will take over to wrap it up.
Sure. Thanks, Gabby. So next steps after this would be for us to, if you all are agreeable, to the recommendation of option two, that we would then identify our transit capital investments that need to be made and then develop a funding strategy to actually bring those capital investments to reality. Go ahead with the next slide. So when we think about the implementation portion, and we did again ask some of these questions in the survey, we need to identify the days of the week that we would like to have service. Just to circle back, there was a strong preference that we at least do the weekdays from the community in terms of hours per day. Again, there was a strong preference for all-day service pretty much from, from morning peak to, to evening peak. A lot of folks seem to be missing that midday service. And then we have to look at the frequency, the number of trips per hour. So how many, how many buses do we actually want to have on the route at any one given time to, to cut down or increase whatever level of, of wait time that, that we're willing to offer the public between bus, buses on the route? And then again, how many locations do we want to have along the, the service area? Certainly, we want to take advantage of where the overlaps exist because they already have a lot of the stop infrastructure in place. And so all those things kind of go together into putting that implementation plan in place for both capital and operating costs. So the next slides kind of delve into that in a little more detail about what each of those are. And so when we're looking at operating costs, since we are looking at potentially Go Raleigh as being the provider if Garner decides to embark with service, they've got a lot of this kind of in the hopper already. But one of the things that you look at again is the cycle time. How long does it take if you're starting at North-South Station to go to White Oak and then come all the way back? That, that's the cycle time. We targeted an hour to try to keep, keep that as routine as possible and to help align with the other bus route schedules. The span of the service, again, how many hours a day? So when are we starting to, when are we stopping each day? The frequency, again, how many times is the bus going to travel that route? Days of the week, which we talked about, and then the cost per hour. Again, you'll see this in upcoming slides. Because Go Raleigh would be the operator, they have a lot of that data already and have a standard estimate that they use for their bus routes. Then when it comes to the capital costs, those are kind of the one-time with some long-term maintenance costs that will go with them. We would need some input on the amenity types. And when we talk about amenity types, we're really talking about the stop infrastructure. So is it going to be a bench? Is it going to be a bench with a shelter? Is it just going to be a sign? Is there going to be ADA compatibility at the stop if it's needed? So all, all of those kinds of things, you know, the garbage receptacle, all, all of that stuff. Then how many, how many of the stops do you really want to amenitize? So not every stop has to have the same infrastructure. So we can establish some different levels of stop infrastructure. The number of vehicles that have to be purchased to run the route obviously is another big-ticket item. And then infrastructure improvements, is there anything that has to be done to the existing roadway? Is there park-and-ride facilities that need to be expanded, anything like that? For the most part, we don't see the need for a lot of that. And I think even vehicles are, are pretty well covered. So it's mostly looking at the, the first two items and somewhat the third.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. So now I'll walk through some of the options that the consultant helped us to develop just to get a ballpark range of, of how much the service might run us depending on things like frequency and span of service, which Jeff was discussing. So there's a range of three tiers with tier one being more premium and then tier two and tier three. So the ideal tier or, I guess, depending on where the town is financially, since we are all having, working on the town's budget and still assessing what the impact of COVID-19 is going to be to that. It might be a matter of discussing what would be more financially feasible. But um, so with tier one, with all of these, obviously, the cycle time is 60 minutes since it's all for the same routing option. But ideally, it would be 30-minute frequency and the span of service running between 5:30 and AM and 11:30 PM in order to mirror what Go Raleigh provides on Route 20. So it would just be nice to keep that consistent with Route 20. That was the thinking behind that. And the, the cost per hour of $85, that's just a standard cost that we get from Go Raleigh that they use in order to help develop these cost estimates. And then when you combine all of these factors, you get the total cost. And so it's broken down by if we were to provide weekdays-only service or if it were to be seven days, so including the weekends. And so with tier one, if it were to just be weekday service, it would be a little over $780,000. If it was for the full week, then it would be about 1.1 million. And then with tier two and tier three, just gradually changing either of the, the different factors. So with tier two, it would be, you could have the option of providing 30-minute service during the peak and less frequent service during the midday in order to offset some of that cost and bring the, bring that down. So it'd be the trade-off of slightly less convenient service, but at a lower cost. So depending on, on what, what the town is, is able to cover or whatever we wind up deciding is, is possible. We have a number of options here that the consultant provided just so that we could have an initial discussion and get an idea of, of how that would affect the cost. And so then with, with tier three, you see that's just 60 minutes all day and no 30-minute frequency. So you can see how those options impact the total cost with the premier service being tier one. And for a total of seven-day service would be around $1.1 million. And if, at the other end of the spectrum with tier three, and if you only have weekday service, then it would be about $303,450. So with the capital costs, there are several things that come into play. So you have different amenity types. And the survey has indicated that there's a preference for, at the bare minimum, having benches and shelters. You know, having, having that is kind of considered bare minimum to, in order to provide, you know, a comfortable waiting space for passengers. And so from, from there, you, you can assume that depending on the number of stops, you can factor in between $10,000 and $15,000 for providing benches and shelters. And then you multiply that by the number of new stops. And we estimated between two to five, since some of the stops would be overlapping with existing Route 20. And in that way, we wouldn't have to provide, provide as many new stops. And then with the vehicle purchases, we don't have to worry about that since this would be provided through Go Raleigh service and they would be using buses that they already have. And for infrastructure improvements, there, we wouldn't be providing any, any capital cost would just be for the, for the amenities at the bus stops themselves. So transit fare evaluation. Another key question that the town is going to have to consider is what fare, if any, we should charge for a new fixed route bus service? And a few things to keep in mind with that discussion is ridership. So ridership will obviously increase with lower fares. And so there's, you know, a fare elasticity there. And by that, I mean, the higher it is to, the higher it costs to ride, the lower amount of riders that you can assume are going to be using that service. So it's just a matter of figuring out where on that scale, where the sweet spot is at. And another consideration is marketing and communications. So just making it easy to understand for all. So having, one thing that you would want to keep in mind is with, with ridership fares, you'd want to keep it as consistent with Go Raleigh service, just to make it, make it simple for what bus riders might already be familiar with. So then another consideration is the administrative effort of collecting and managing fares. And that requires resources. So that's another advantage that there would potentially be with not collecting fares. So it just plays an important part in the financial plan and will be a big factor. So with the fare analysis methodology, so you estimate the baseline ridership and you figure the higher fare can affect the demand for the transit ridership. So you have to establish different fare alternatives to test in order to try and gauge what the, what the ridership would be. And with the different fare alternatives, we could either choose to adopt the existing Go Raleigh fare. So we charge the same thing that Go Raleigh charges, and then that would be consistent. There's the option to charge a lower fare and to subsidize the difference with local funds. Or there's the option to just have it be fare-free service. And then you have to apply fare elasticity. And so the consultant based some of this information off of peer agencies. So Apex, Wake Forest, and Cary are similar and close by communities in the region and they have And they have transit service that the consultant analyzed what they're doing to get a sense of what we can expect. And they also based it on other Amazon shuttles, other Amazon shuttle service. So from this, you arrive at a recommendation. And so there are larger implications to consider here. So subsidy per passenger is based on operating costs and on ridership. And so the funding strategy, what we'll be getting out of this work is it summarizes capital and operating costs for five years, so it would be 2020 through 2024. And it identifies potential capital and operating revenue sources that the town will have available to to run the service. And so that includes federal, state or local sources. And it also helps to establish the startup and the ongoing funding strategy that we can use in order to get this service running. So again, just a reminder that we are, in the project timeline, we are essentially reaching the end. And with council's feedback tonight, we will arrive at a preferred alternative. And from there, the consultant can finish wrapping up the capital needs and the costing information that the town would need to decide how we're going to proceed. So that is the end of the presentation and we'd like to open it up to any questions from town council.
Okay Gabby, thank you, you've given us, you and Jeff, lots of information. I want to ask just sort of what I think is a quick question, I'm going to turn it over to council. But in going back to the schedules that I guess Go Raleigh has, where they start, I think at 5:30 in the morning and run until 11:30 in the evening. Do we have any data on current ridership in our area and/or projected ridership that would support the idea of a bus starting that early in the morning and going that late at night?
Yes, so Go Raleigh did provide ridership information for Route 20. I'm trying to remember, they provided it by stop. I'm trying to remember if there was a breakdown by hour. Do you remember Jeff, whether that was?
I think that's in there, we can get it, they may not have packaged it that way. But certainly the feedback from the survey was that you would, the peak service in the start at 5:30 AM to get folks into downtown Raleigh. And by the time you complete the peak hour service in the evening, adding a couple more hours in the evening isn't really that much of a major hurdle. But if there's not as much internal demand, we certainly would not have to extend that long into the evening. But since both Route 20, that serves White Oak now, and Route 7, that serves North South Station, continue to run until those hours already, we thought it might be less confusing overall for riders to know that the whole Garner quote unquote system is operational for the same hours. Certainly doesn't have to be, we can tweak that, but that was just our preliminary thinking.
And I don't need to make that a big issue, I'm intrigued by that. And occasionally I will hear people say, well, you know, one of us comes by late in the afternoon or evening. Seems to not have many riders, but that's just a visual that people see sometimes. Okay, I'll start with Mr. Singleton for questions or comments.
Yes, Gabby, the slide you showed us that had the projected cost depending on what tier is selected. Now those, we get some money, we get a portion of money from the half cent or quarter cent tax or whatever, we get a portion of that money, do we not? And because you're talking, you had ranges from 370,000 dollars to 1.1 million dollars. Do we get, do we receive a portion of money from the fare, excuse me, the tax that is currently collected? Or is all this, all these dollars going to have to come out of a town, town of Garner budget? The annual operating costs?
Sorry, no, so the CFA program, which is part of what is funding this study. So we would be able to apply for funding through that program in order to operate this service as well. And that would be at a 50/50 match.
Okay, I thought I remember that somewhere along the line here and that it was about a 50/50 match. I understand, and I see the bus all the time because it stops in Aversboro and Pool Road, excuse me, Pool Drive. Near my office, I see it, the stop on Pool Drive in the evening is almost at the top of the hours. Either five till or at the top of the hour, I can see it in the evenings. And it rides behind and goes by some of the apartments, the multifamily back there. And then it comes back on to Aversboro. Mr. Marston raises a question about, you know, what are ridership numbers on some of these late night routes? I don't know. So the fact that you've got Route 20 still operating in some of these locations, that just makes me wonder how easy would it be if you started at a route time of, let's do the 6 AM to 8 PM, then you had requests to extend that? How hard would that be? Is this, when you commit to this, is this programmed for 12 months or six months or a quarter? Or could they make changes and add, lengthen stop times after you notify them through a period of time to see that, you know, to try to satisfy that? If you started with a few hours left, can you add hours on or how hard would something like that be to do?
Certainly, so that's something that could be, it doesn't have to be permanent, so we could revise that as we go on. And so part of the advantage of the costing information that the consultant is developing and we can direct them to, you know, help us calculate cost estimates for maybe different levels of service. And if the town would like to start off with, you know, a certain amount of service and gauge what the ridership is like, then that can be, the service can be, you know, altered based on that information. If we find there are certain hours when the service is being utilized more heavily, we can provide heavier frequency during certain hours, et cetera. But there would be, there can be changes.
Yeah, I think, I think the most limiting factor is probably Go Raleigh's operational budget. There is, there is a process you have to go through, similar to what they're doing right now with Route 20. They do have to do some surveying of existing riders and have a little bit of public input into the process. So it's not, it's not as quick as, hey, we want to change this next month. It's probably more like, you know, two to four times a year that you can make adjustments. And Gabby, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, there's no, there's not, I don't think any real urgency to zero in on on the exact service you're wanting to provide right now. That can certainly wait for a much later date when we're ready to actually press the go button. But this at least gives you an idea of, for planning purposes. And certainly if there's, if there's preferences at this time, we can certainly kind of help rank those. And then the plan will give us a strategy of how to, how to address the costs overall. I think the only thing that we definitely need to have out of tonight is the route, the route option choice.
Okay, and one just, one more question, the amenity type, the benches or shelters or so forth, is that done through a consultant decides where they go? Or I'm just curious on how you would decide which locations may have a shelter and a bench, of course, and which may just have a bench and it's not have protection from the elements?
Sure, so that, yeah, that's not up to the consultant. That's, so we were estimating that it would be between two and five stops just based on where there's overlap with Route Option 2 and Go Raleigh's Route 20. So like Jeff said, we can take advantage of whatever existing stop amenities are already out there. And then based on whatever, wherever it's determined that we should have stops for Option 2, we would determine what, what level of amenities could be provided.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Behringer, you're next.
I don't have any questions, it's very thorough presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. Mr. Vance there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor, I was talking to myself again. Did I hear correctly that Option 2 is the, is the option that the staff is leaning toward being the preferred alternative?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, can you just give me a quick summary of versus Option 1 versus Option 2? It doesn't have to be long as to why Option 2 is considered the preferred by the staff?
Sure, so, you know, some of the advantages with Option 2 is that it would provide kind of a more local service. So with Option 1, a good portion of it overlaps with, with the existing Route 20. So you wouldn't technically be getting a lot of new service or service that's not available today. And additionally with Option 1, there would potentially be more transfers required. And so one telling thing was that when we had the stakeholder meeting, the second that they put two and two together and realized that that would require, potentially require more transfers, they immediately spoke out in favor of Option 2. So it would just potentially be more inconvenient for the riders. And if it's more inconvenient, then it's less likely that, that people would want to use it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just offer that we, we were concerned about Option 1 showing up as the higher preference in the survey. And then we do have a couple, two or three transit riders on the steering committee. And the more we talked about it, we kind of realized that there were probably a few things, finer details that folks didn't understand. And the transfer one was a biggie for the commuters. Because if you lived on Aversboro, your only option would be to hop on the local service and either go to Route 7 or Route 20 and you had to transfer. At least with keeping 20 in place, they can still continue just to get on 20 and not have to transfer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, yes, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir, I agree with the option too. As I'm looking at this map, the potential Amazon Route 2, as I'm understanding, is that it's going to pick up, Huado can go up there and back? Or can you explain that one a little bit, the green route there?
Sure, so that one would essentially be what we call tripper service. So we would identify, through coordination with Amazon, we would identify when they have shifts coming in and then coordinate to have a shuttle essentially run out from from White Oak up to the Amazon distribution center. So that wouldn't necessarily be an option all day long. It would be timed out or be coordinated with whatever shifts that they have at their distribution center. And so that, that is just an option, that's not something that has definitely been decided. It's an ongoing conversation that we, we have with Amazon to see what their appetite is to, to potentially be a financial partner with that option.
Because I think they had, I'm trying to remember that parking lot, like they had for bus stops to come in and offload them. And I'm going from memory from, I think that is there.
Yeah, yeah, they did, they did build one into their actual site plan, was not a requirement of ours. So I think they, they've envisioned that they may operate some kind of private service even. And then we also did ask them to build a bump out into Joan Sausage Road for, for service at, at the roadway as well.
Okay, that could be, that could be good, especially with traffic, we've always got that issue and that would be good. I agree with you guys, Option 2 looks like to be the more friendlier one to us.
Okay, council, everybody's had a round, any final questions, comments? I want to thank Gabby and Jeff for your excellent presentation, a lot of information you shared with us tonight. And I think moving forward, this is going to be a great asset to our town. Sometimes I take for granted that people have cars and they drive their cars. But I think more and more available bus traffic that comes at a set time will enhance ridership and be a bonus for our town. What is the cost to ride the bus? I'm sorry?
What's, what is the cost to ride the bus? I have no clue.
Gabby or Jeff?
Two, 250, I believe, for a, for a one way, right Jeff? It's not one, it's 250. I'm remembering that correctly.
Right. But we, but we would have input into what that local fare would be as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions, Jeff or Gabby, for the council that we haven't covered? I know this was to receive feedback and discussion.
Gabby, I guess we just probably need a thumbs up. I think I've heard everybody agree that they're okay with the Option 2 for the consultant to zero in on to develop the final report.
Yes.
Think there's consensus on that, council, unless anybody wants to speak up to the contrary? Okay, hearing none, yes, I think you've, you've interpreted that correctly, Jeff.
All right, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both for your patience, sure enough. So with dismissing Jeff and Gabby, council, there's only one other item left. And I assume our town engineer has been waiting, I won't say patiently, but he's been waiting perhaps for some time. But Chris, Mr. Johnson, are you ready to take on item six?
Yes, sir, I am. Let me see if I can get my technology set up here, one sec.
Okay, I see something on the screen.
It showed up every, okay, good. So yeah, thank you, mayor and council, for giving me the opportunity to talk about this item for the YMCA pedestrian crossing. As you may recall, a few months back, Mr. Hodges provided a brief presentation to council in advance of us, we had met with DOT and talked about this project on multiple occasions, even since before my tenure with the town. But we had met with them in the field a few months back and had come to an agreement on a conceptual design for this project. And so what this presentation is for is to present you the, we finished that further design work and have brought this item forward to move forward with approval of the project and to construction. So very brief presentation today. I'll quickly go over the project background, existing conditions, give you a brief look at the pedestrian crossing plan, talk to you about a potential to incorporate this work as a change order to our active resurfacing contract that is in progress that would allow us to finish that, this project pretty expeditiously in the next few months. And then our final recommendation. So a brief picture of the project, just for those looking at home. The Timber Drive Aversboro intersection is right up here. This, I believe, is Lowe's Food Shopping Center. We got Aversboro Road, the YMCA right here, we got an entrance to Heather Woods, Summer's Walk. And this is actually the parcel that is currently under construction, the Minglewood Townhome Site. So that is under construction. And then, as you may know, there's a sidewalk that pretty much runs all along the eastern much runs all along the eastern side of Aversboro, all the way down to White Deer Park. So this is a kind of a shot of the existing conditions looking southbound on Aversboro Road. And so this is the entrance to Heather Woods on what would be the, the east side of the road and the entrance to the YMCA. And what we're talking about doing is putting in a crosswalk right here on this side. And it lines up with the sidewalk that ends, that goes into Heather Woods. And it also would accommodate pedestrians coming north or south along Aversboro Road. Here's another shot, looking back towards Timber Drive. And again, this would basically connect right across here.
Chris, one quick question. At one time, they were talking about doing this somewhere a little further north, but now it's come back to these two existing sidewalks, to the sidewalk, existing ramps, correct?
That is correct. We, we, this, this seemed to be a more logical place that sort of worked for the directions of pedestrian activity from all directions, whether it be coming out of Heather Woods, or coming from White Deer, or coming from the, the Timber Drive intersection. And it ends up right at the front entrance of the YMCA. So and it, and we, we, there had been discussions about possibly taking and crossing back at the next entrance, which is back in this area. But that was actually mid-block. We felt it would, it would be more, more expensive to construct and seemed to be, didn't seem to work as well with where, where people are walking from. Because most people that are coming from the south are not going to want to walk past the YMCA to cross the road. This just seems like a more logical location.
I don't argue that at all. Very good. Thank you.
Sure. So, and I know this is a busy slide, but it's really just, just, I'll walk you through it real quick. But I already talked to you about where the pedestrian crossing's going to be, which is in the, where it's shown in red. This green area right here is just showing, this is an area where we're going to have to add some curb, excuse me, add some curb and gutter around that intersection radius, because right now it's a shoulder section. And we'll convert this one ramp that's currently crossing Heather Woods, we'll convert that to a shared ramp, so that it can, it can handle both the crosswalk here and the cross, new crosswalk to YMCA. And then we'll be putting in some solar-powered rectangular rapid flash and beacon signs on each approach. This is, this is the, what will go at the crossing itself. And this is sort of the go-to standard solar-powered device that the DOT likes to see, which includes a, you know, has some sort of solar device at the top. These will be the signs that we use. And then this is the rectangular rapid flash beacon. So when they push the button to cross, then those will start flashing to, to, to provide notice to try, oncoming traffic that there's somebody crossing the street.
Question?
And then, yes.
That is neat. You say DMV likes those?
NC DOT, yes. That is something that they have approved and have been using for several years now.
Y'all know exactly where I'm going with this. We need two of those down there at Lake Benson Park at the same, because the sign is there and he's a solar, that would be ideal.
I knew that was coming.
You knew it was coming.
Mr. Matthews, I appreciate your, your vigor there for the other location. But for now, in the time of night, let's sort of just stick with this location for now.
I'd like to see, Mayor, so when you finish up there, they just come on down there and put those two.
Okay, yes, I hear you.
Y'all remember that now.
And then in addition to the, the powered versions, there'll also be a standard pedestrian ahead signs that will be placed approximately 300 feet on each end of the crossing. So you'll have the, the standard signage that alerts you to an upcoming pedestrian crossing. And then you'll have the flashing version, solar-powered signs at the actual crossing. And then the, the, we're going to have to do, as you can see, the southbound movements, we're actually crossing the, the crossing is actually cutting through the existing turnbays that are there today. So what we're going to be doing is simply taking advantage of some of this unused yellow gore area that's further up the road to provide some of the stacking back to the left turn lane. It really doesn't really impact the through lane or the right turn lane at all, because those are both free-flow movements. But this will at least make sure that whatever stacking they had before today will still be in place tomorrow after the new sign, new crossing is put in. So just some of that gore area will be removed that isn't being used today. So as far as moving ahead, staff is recommending that this work be added to the resurfacing contract. One, to expedite the construction, of course. But two, because a lot of the items that you have in this contract are already in the resurfacing contract and have unit costs associated them that went through the competitive bid process just a few months ago. So we took several of those items, such as the pavement markings, some of the concrete work, the ramps, that was already included. So we were able to get prices for those very easily. And then Daniels Incorporated, who's our, our contractor that's working on that project, provided us new unit costs for the line items that we really didn't have in the resurfacing contract, which we didn't have the, the solar-powered signage. And then we didn't have much grading work, which is very minimal. The grading work's just that one corner where we're doing the, the new ramp. And then some seating and mulching for that corner. So once we've gotten all those costs in, 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 back from Daniels, we've got a combined total cost of $24,580. We'll, after the, after the presentation, we could provide a couple options for funding source, but that is something that needs to be determined before we can move forward. And then if this was added to the change, as a change order to the contract, we would include a five-day time extension. And we did that simply by a prorated method of the total cost of the change order, the $25,000 number in comparison to the overall contract amount, and then prorated that against the total contract time that we have in place today. So the final recommendation would be to approve the project. Once a funding source is identified and authorized, the town manager to execute the change order with Daniels Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $24,580. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'll go around, Rob, and again, Mr. Singleton.
And Chris, your, our agenda package says this work will be completed by July 2020. Sometimes, sometime during July it'll be completed, is what you're saying.
Yes, sir. They're, right now, they're, they've already, I think we had like, I want to say, is it 13 or 17 streets in the contract? They've already finished about five or six streets. And they are picking up more progress each week. Because at the beginning of the contract, they were also wrapping up some other work. But now they're moving towards our project and moving fast. So we're, we're hoping that they actually would be finished with the resurfacing work by the end of June. So this could be, could be incorporated at any time, because this work is a little bit different from, it's not, it doesn't incorporate, it doesn't require a lot of asphalt work. So a lot of this stuff could be done by some of their subcontractors or different, different teams within the primary contractor itself. So it could be incorporated even quicker.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vance?
No comments.
Mr. Matthews?
Great presentation. Just order two more of them lights and put them down the road. I love you to death. Why didn't y'all tell me about that before? I wonder if we're talking about putting some statues in number one road. And please tell me that Chris Daniels didn't pave that road in front of Hawaii.
Oh, I'm not sure.
I, no, I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Ms. Behringer, I don't believe we got you at the end, did we?
I, I have no questions. I'm really glad to see this coming. That is, that's amazing. And I just need to give some direction to Mr. Matthews about not adding things on, but making it his own separate agenda.
He doesn't know it yet, but he's forfeiting some of his time with the next meeting, I think.
There you go. Got it.
No, no, that's okay. Okay. Any other question, comments? I need a motion, I believe, to authorize this work to go forward.
So.
Okay. Everybody understands. We're approving, authorizing, town manager execute change order number two to add work to the annual resurfacing contract. And the amount was how much? Twenty? Say it again, Chris?
Twenty-four, $580.
Okay. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Heard several seconds. Ms. Gibson, I believe, let's see, who seconded that? Was it Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No? Okay. And it is so ordered. So thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, for being the last person and waiting around for it. So you have your, you have your marching orders now, I believe, right?
Good morning.
Yes, sir. And I guess the only thing, if John could, could maybe chime in, would we need to discuss where the funding would be appropriated from?
Mr. Hodges, are you there?
Yes, like everyone else, did not unmute myself. Sorry. The, we could just pull this, I think, from the existing funding source for the resurfacing, since we are doing curb work and we've been funding other curb ramp replacements out of that. If council wants us to look for a different funding source, we can either pull that from fund balance or we could fund it out of bond funds, street and sidewalk bond funds, where a couple of other signalized crossings have been funded from. I do think that we will likely eventually exceed the funding available for the projects we have in the queue, but this is a fairly minor amount. So if council has any direction on where they'd like us to pull the funding from, we can take that and go back and, and get a final answer for you.
So the existing funding, which comes from the motor vehicle taxes, improvements to roads, this is improvement to a road for safety improvement. So I'll, I'll just throw that out there. That sounds like a reasonable source for, it's $25,000.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And Mr. Beck is on, I think. I'll just, if he's, if he wants to chime in and just confirm that that would be, as far as he's concerned, an okay use and.
Mr. Beck, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Could you comment on the issue at hand?
Yes. So I think either of the options proposed by John would work. The funding source, I would need to, to go back and look at how much we may have there. It may possibly be a combination of the funding source and fund balance. But either way, it's a, it's a pretty small amount to take from fund balance, if that's what we need to do as well.
Okay. Since the council has already agreed to move forward with the work, is this something we need to bring back as a consent item in terms of where the, where the funds are coming from?
Yes. We'll need to bring back a budget amendment at some point before the end of this fiscal year. So it, it may be, it may not be at the June one meeting. It may be at the June 16 meeting.
Okay. Council is okay with that? Okay. All right. Council, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I guess you can be dismissed for the night, as most of the rest of us will be here shortly. So.
We'll also mention one last thing before I leave. Since we're talking a lot about pedestrian projects, wanted to let you know, if you may recall, the Timber Drive Sidewalk Project, which is one of our last projects, it was awarded back in the spring to Sand Hills Contractors. And they requested to postpone the notice to proceed due to the coronavirus pandemic. We've been made aware that they are ready to get this project moving. And so we have awarded or revised the notice to proceed, and they, they will begin work on June 1. So beginning next week, that project will move ahead. And that puts the completion date the weekend of Thanksgiving. So I just wanted to let you all aware, that's another big project that's moving ahead.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
So it has a five, is that, so that's about a six month, excuse me, about a five-month window, right, Chris?
It is, it is 180 days.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council, I know sometimes we have a place for council reports and others, but that was not included on this particular agenda. So I'm inclined to, to leave that off. And certainly there'll be an opportunity, our meeting coming up very shortly at the 1st of June. So unless there's anything else for the good of the cause, and we've kept you all steady here without a break, I know, but I appreciate your indulgence. But I'll be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I was going to mention something real quick. Mayor Marksburn, just for the good of the group, the communications manager wanted me to mention that we've had 393 views on Memorial Day program on YouTube. And we've probably had others on the GTV 11 channel, but we don't have a counter for that. But we know at least almost 400 have watched the program on YouTube.
And I highly recommend.
That's about twice as many that attend the live program every year.
Wow. And, and since you've mentioned that, and I'll be brief, I received a very nice email on the day after it was published, I believe, from a retired lieutenant colonel in a little town outside of San Antonio, Texas. And the essence of his email was, I want to thank your town for the wonderful celebration video that you did. He said, it's my idea of the way things should be celebrated, and it meant a lot to me. And he said, I want to thank you and your town very much. So I thought that was just one expression of how folks from faraway places even had a chance to watch that. A lot of credit goes to Tim Stevens and the show and tell ministries. We can mention that some more at our other meeting. But if you haven't had a chance to watch it, I encourage you to go do that. It is inspiring. Thank you. All right. Let me see. Did we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Yes, we did.
And we already voted on it. Is that right or no? Let's vote on.
Yes, we did. Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition to it. Thank you so much, all of you. And we will be seeing you again pretty soon, Monday night, I believe, right?
Yes, indeed.
So thank you all for your indulgence. You can sign off at your leisure.